Jen, how would I pronounce I Z Q U I E R D O? Jen, are you there? Okay, he's Cuero. All right. It's I Z Q U I E R D O? Huh?
Hey, Dan.
Hi, everybody. Marty. And Kathy or Jay, if you want to let, well, I guess we can wait a couple more minutes, but we'll let Lulu Moore in since she'll be our first item of discussion.
Janet, thank you for your donation to K D and K.
You are welcome. Yeah, I always love listening to April on Friday. Makes my Friday and
Good.
Yeah, and then you were talking to her. So you guys inspired me to get a membership for my cat.
And we appreciate that.
All right, see, do we have everybody? Looks like we have a pretty good group. And I see we have a very special guest in the audience tonight. Looks like we have Lulu Moore joining us. Lulu, can you wave to everybody? All right. All right, well, at the first meeting of every month, we do student of the month. And Lulu's, Lulu's teachers have nominated her as such. Congratulations, Lulu. Lulu, do you mind, can you unmute your microphone and tell us how old you are and where you go to school? Maybe what grade you're in?
I'm in third grade.
Where do you go to school?
Ross Montessori School.
All right. And what kind of things do you like to do when you're not being a great student?
Can we hear product? We're already here, sorry.
Okay. Well, Lulu, I'll, I'll, I'll take the edge off and I'll.
What do you like to do? In your playtime?
I don't know.
Okay, well, do you you like to have fun? Good. All right. Well, Lulu, here's what your teachers have to say about you. They say, Lulu has a great reputation with others. She's reliable and follows through on her commitments. Congratulations, Lulu. That means you have great integrity and you're a great student. So thank you for doing all that you do and keep being a great student.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get your certificate signed and we'll get it to you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right, do we have any family members of Miguel Esquerra Moreno tonight? Thank you, Jen. I am not seeing anybody. So hopefully they'll join next month and we can try it again. Give it one more look. See, I'm not seeing anybody. With that, it being 6:02, we'll call the meeting to order. And Kathy, if you could do roll call, I'd appreciate it.
Ben Baumfach. Bonnie Kitching. Here.
Yeah, sorry, I'm here. I couldn't get some of your tests enough.
Dan Richardson.
Here.
Heather Henry. Here. Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Luis Cianes.
Here.
Erica Sparhawk.
All right, thank you, Kathy. I have not taken Ben's advice yet and bought a separate mic. So if I have issues, please let me know. I'll try switching mics again. That being said, a couple of other general housekeeping items before the meeting starts. We do have a Spanish translator on the Zoom call as usual. So please avoid using acronyms, or if you do use one, please spell out what you're referring to. Thank you, Jen, for being here. And then also just a reminder that on all our meetings, we only use the chat function for logistical purposes, like I can't hear you or I can't get logged in. We do not use it for sharing content or opinions. And so far, we've had decent compliance. But if things get out of hand, we will remove people from the meeting. It's just very distracting and just like in a regular public meeting. It just doesn't work to have people chit chatting while a meeting is going on. So thank you for abiding by that. Item number two is the consent agenda, a pretty lengthy one. Item A is accounts payable. Item B is trustee minutes from March 16th. Item C is trustee minutes from March 23rd. Item D is a liquor license renewal for the Thunder River Theater. Item E is a liquor license renewal for Pops Liquors. Item F is a modification of premises for Brass Anvil. Item G is a modification of premises for Fat Thai. Item H is a modification of premises, The Batch Emporium. Item I is a modification of premises for Senior Taco. Item J is an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement for mosquito monitoring. Item K is a retail marijuana, in fact, manufactured infused products license renewal application for Sopris Labs. Item I is a medical marijuana manufacturer infused product license renewal application for Sopris Labs. I think that was the same thing. Item A M is an extraterritorial water service agreement for 331 Seven Oaks Road. And lastly, item N is a Nettle Creek backwash tank lining bid. Do any trustees have questions or comments about the consent agenda? Ben?
I have a few questions. It's such a big consent agenda. I just wondered if Kathy can just confirm that, or Jay, that the modification of premises applications for the decks and patios are consistent with our agreement, I believe, at the last meeting, that they could apply for, you know, their normal deck of, I think, 25 feet and up to the extension into a full second parking space, but not beyond that, just making sure that that carried over to those.
It's my understanding that the modification of premise achieves that. There'll be more detail other than the sketch on the right of way lease agreements that we will be entering into once we get the modifications done. So there's another step on, on that in terms of our approved lease agreement. We also require those establishments to provide us proof of insurance with the town listed as an additional insurer. So we're going through all those steps to get ready for the May 1st launch of the Wednesday through Saturday street closures.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question, and that's probably also Kathy, but on the retail and, and the decimal, I guess, the NIPS. I just wondered if these guys have been in business and if they've been operating. My understanding was that we, you know, changed our licensing procedures a year or two ago so that you couldn't just hang on to a license if you weren't using it. And then I recognized some of the names on some of these as people who had come in before and had licenses they didn't use. So I just wanted to confirm that these licenses have been in use, in use, if they're being renewed.
Yes, I made them provide me with their matrix that they have to give to the state because I had the same concern then. And the manager has assured me that they are going to be stepping up production more. I think it's minimal right now, but they are operating in there.
Okay. Um, I mean, and that's just curiosity then, like, how do we normally verify whether somebody's actually in operation? I mean, I think it's obvious if they're a retail store and they're open to the public or not. But when it's a manufacturing facility, do we generally go and check in on them or anything when they're just doing a renewal?
We tried to check in on them. John Layborn and I, a few months ago, knocked on the door, but nobody was there. So instead, I just asked them to supply me with the matrix, which is a very complicated paperwork, but it shows that they are producing.
Okay. I mean, maybe if you're in communication with them, just let them know that board members have asked that question and that if their renewal comes up again next year and there's not, you know, obvious evidence of, of their business being in business, we'll probably ask staff to, to really confirm that and do a site visit or something like that.
Will do.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Lonnie?
All right, guys, I have a really crummy connection. Can you hear me okay? Am I coming across in real time?
Yep.
Okay, so my question is around the extraterritorial water service agreement. I see that they are limited to 42 GPM per year. But will they also fall under our jurisdiction should we encounter and we will encounter a third consecutive drought year? So if that needs to be pulled back or if an adjustment needs to be made, is there a provision for that?
You know, they would have to follow all our rules, but we have never pulled back in any of our drought restrictions of per gallon usage per home. It's been on outdoor usage, which is limited under this agreement. So I don't expect, our average use is closer to 10,000 gallons a month per individual resident. So I don't expect us to be anywhere below that in any sort of drought mitigation. As we are not short, our shortage will be on irrigation, not production of potable water if we do end up in a drought regulations this year, but they would be required to follow all our requirements. But this puts limits way below our current water allocations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Erica. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to item number three is persons present not on the agenda. So if you are in our Zoom audience and would like to speak on an item that's not related to, say, Thompson Park, New York Pizza, or Eighth Street, and would like to address the board, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, looks like Fred and Yolanda. First, go Fred and then Yolanda. Fred, you just need to unmute your microphone and then you'll have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Thanks for joining us. And Fred, since you're the first speaker, please limit your comments to three minutes, address them to me, and just generally state where you're from. You don't need to give us your address, but just where you're from.
My name is Fred Malo. I am a co-leader of 350 Roaring Fork and a resident of Carbondale. 350 Roaring Fork is a subset of 350 Colorado, the 350.org, all dedicated to reversing the effects of climate change. No single person, municipality, or organization is going to be able to do anything about climate change by themselves. When I divested my paltry family trust of all fossil fuel companies and financial institutions that invest in fossil fuels, I didn't expect those entities to fold their tents. But if millions follow suit, it'll have an impact. It's the same with my chosen modes of transportation. Transportation is responsible for one-third of the world's greenhouse gas emissions. If my destination is within a few blocks, I walk. If it's beyond that, but within the town limits of Carbondale, I ride my bike. If it's elsewhere in the Roaring Fork Valley, I take the Roaring Fork Transit Authority. Only after that do I resort to driving my hybrid. Each Tuesday evening, I have a meeting at the meeting place next to the goat restaurant. That takes me down Eighth Street often after dark. Competing for the right of way with moving vehicles in front and behind you and parked vehicles to the side isn't fun.
Fred, time out one second. If you're talking about Eighth Street, that agenda item will be coming up in, in a little bit. This is general comments, not related to the agenda.
Oh, okay, I thought it was, all right.
I apologize, but we'll let you back in when, when that item is on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we have Yolanda Melendez and then Earl Rogers.
Hi, my name is Yolanda Melendez and I live in Carbondale. And I'm concerned about the, the mandates, the emergency orders that have been in place for over a year now, or some maybe perhaps a little less than a year. The mask mandates, I'm concerned about that and how long they're going to go on for. I'm not only concerned for myself, but my child who attends school here in Carbondale. It's, it's become, obviously, it's an issue with understanding the teachers, with understanding her classmates, with communicating well and with hearing and just social, for social reasons alone. You know, she, I feel, has the right to interact in the way that we all interacted as children and how we adapted to our society and culture. And we are taking that from them. And, and the validity of the coronavirus has been debunked repeatedly, and it continues to be debunked on a daily basis by scientists, virologists, doctors, microbiologists, all sorts of people that know a lot more about it than myself and I'm assuming a lot more than, than the people on this, in this meeting. So, and the people making those decisions for us. I feel that the government is overreaching and I realize I'm almost, almost out of town, but time, but I just feel like it's an overreach and we need to consider the people that are healthy. And if the people that want to wear masks or get their vaccines, then so be it. But not everyone needs these measures. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yolanda. I appreciate your willingness to come to, come before the board and express your opinions. We have heard multiple opinions over the last year on, on what I might call both sides of this issue. And I think, I speak for the board when I say we take the emergency declaration very seriously. And it has been over a year since we've instituted that. We've already begun discussions of how soon we can revisit that. And as soon as we feel that it's safe to do so, we will do that. I realize that there's also a state mandate and there's some differences there. But please know that it's our interest to remove it as soon as we feel it's safe. I think I also speak for the board to say that we take this pandemic very seriously. I wouldn't say that it's been debunked by any means. So please know that we take it seriously and are trying to balance the concerns of all our citizens. But Jay, any thoughts to add to that?
Yeah, just real quick, the mask order from the state, which has a few exceptions to it now, but still includes children in school and folks in inside gatherings of up to 10 people which aren't vaccinated, is still in place through May 4th. And we'll see where the state goes on that. On Friday, the local control on the balance of most of the health orders will be turned over to the counties. And the county commissioners next week will be meeting as the county board of health to further discuss where we're, where we're going as a county on this. So that's just a quick update on kind of things moving along on the, on the COVID front.
Thank you, Jay. And again, Yolanda, thank you for offering your opinions. It looks like Earl lowered his hand, so he may be here for an agenda item. I'm not seeing anyone else. Is there anyone else in the Zoom audience who would like to address us on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seen done. I will move on to item number four, trustee comments. Anybody got any? Oh, Erica.
Um, I missed the chamber meeting last week, so I'll let Marty give an update on that if he wants to, no pressure. But I thought I would give a quick update on Colorado Communities for Climate Action. There's a lot going on right now in the regulatory and at the legislature. And I have a full update I can email out to the board, or frankly, if anybody of the listening audience, since we have so many, are interested in what Colorado Communities for Climate Action is doing at the state level, the policy level, let me know. I'm happy to share. I did want to give an update because it's one of Colorado Communities for Climate Actions. It's a bill that we really are driving forward. And it's the, it's a climate hazard mitigation funding bill. It creates an enterprise fund for the state to then provide grants to communities to deal with climate resilience and hazard mitigation. And it's pretty broad on what those funds could be used for. But it'd be kind of the first funding to help communities who are dealing with the impacts of climate change, whether that is impacts from drought, wildfires, floods, and then create funding to either prevent those from happening or help in kind of the after effects if a community has been heavily impacted. And I can give that one, if anybody else wants to testify on that or testify in anything, there's literally opportunities every single week. So let me know. But this one has made it out of the House Finance Committee and is on its way to Appropriations Committee.
Thanks, Erica. Any other comments? Marty and then Luis.
Yeah, just a very brief update on the Chamber Commerce meeting. I think they've done an awesome, awesome job to get to where they're at currently in terms of finances and keeping active. So they, you know, have plans for more, not only advertising, but also public relations involving Colorado Tourism Council. I brought them up to date about our plans to have music in the park this summer. To that end, I spoke to Eric today. And we're setting up a meeting for the beginning of May with him, Kevin, myself, maybe Steve Sanderford and maybe Amy. You know, I think it's April 17th. The state guidelines will come off and we'll go to county guidelines. Not sure if that's the right date, but right around that day. So want to see what we have to do to prepare to meet the county guidelines for outdoor gatherings. And that was about it. Just thought I would give a very brief update on that. And, you know, K D and K's membership drive is on. They've done well so far, but they can always use more members. And with that, I will defer to Luis.
And I'll defer to Lonnie because she had her hand up first.
Okay. Funny.
Thanks, Luis. Yeah, I'm, I'm lagging here for some reason. Just quickly, one thing, as the senior matters group was preparing this year's programming, it was clear there were a lot of questions about COVID's impact on the senior community as that demographic is particularly prone to underlying conditions. So with that, they connected with a few prominent local resources and developed a reopening our lives virtual session together with the Garfield County Public Library District that will feature an open discussion with Dr. Brooke Allen. And you'll be seeing this published more visibly throughout the week. A sampling of concerns to be addressed are, can we still harbor or spread the virus unknowingly? If we are only visiting with immunized friends, can we eat together indoors until the weather is warmer? Is cooking for each other a risk? Or can we play with our unvaccinated grandchildren without wearing a mask? And I'm sure more questions will surface throughout the discussion as this will be a somewhat informal and primarily informational format. The date is next week, Tuesday, 4:20, starting at 3:30 in the afternoon, and registration is free. As the public, we can access the link to register on the Garfield County Library's website And from there, you'll be provided the Zoom log on information and given an opportunity to pose your questions in advance. And as with this meeting, a Spanish interpretation will be available. So I hope to see many of our senior community online next week, along with anyone really who interacts regularly with our elders. Thanks, that's it for me.
Thanks, Lonnie. And it sounds like that website, in case people missed it, is the Garfield County Public Library website, so they can find it on that website.
Yes, and that'll also be called out in all of the media publications as well. I believe it's already been posted with the Chamber on their weekly newsletter. And I believe there's a link to the Town of Carbondale website. But it will be, I believe, in the Soper Sun in the Spanish section too of the newspaper. So good, good reach.
Well, sounds like a great event. So thanks for letting us know about it. Luis?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates. CPAC met last week and glad to see that things are moving along with Art Round Town for 2021. So you'll see a lot of changes in the sculptures next month with targeting to have a COVID-safe reception outdoors in June, June 3rd, I believe. Parks and Rec meets tomorrow. And then just kind of a reminder really to our residents and everyone as we get into what's I'm sure going to be likely a busy summer with bear activity due to the droughts that residents, hopefully, we can remind them about what our trash ordinance is relating to. You know, either having bear-proof trash receptacles or keeping them in their garage because I'd hate to see, you know, obviously, any bears have to be euthanized due to activity coming up. And then lastly, just because it's been on my mind, it was really disheartening to see that Michael Francisco's hearing was continued for another two weeks from yesterday. And I think in echoing the calls that we hear in our community for all charges to be dropped, I want to encourage for Mr. Francisco not to accept any pardons or really continue to fight this because it's, as I see it, it's really leaving a mark on the town of Carbondale. And this is an injustice that I can't remain silent about. So that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Luis. And just since we have so many viewing audience members, one of the main goals of our waste hauling ordinance was to minimize confrontations with wildlife. So as Luis alluded to, pretty much from this point forward, you're required to have a bear-resistant container or keep your trash locked, not necessarily locked, but secured in a shed or a garage or some structure until, I believe, 7:00 AM. So please note that. You don't do that, you may get a fine. And as Luis mentioned, if a bear gets caught a few times, Eric could be euthanized. So. All right. I just switched my mics. Thanks, Jen. Other trustee comments. I will. I will add a couple. Really just one. We had a Rafta meeting last week and wasn't too eventful, but the, as you may have read in the paper, Rafta and the city of Glenwood Springs and CDOT will be undertaking a pretty large project. It's going to be two underpasses at 27th Street and Highway 1, Highway 82 down in Glenwood. Construction will begin this fall. And that, there will be one that runs north-south under, under 27th Street and one that runs east-west across Highway 82. So we're all familiar with route, with underpasses now, but it's a pretty large project. And of course, there'll be traffic disruptions as that project emerges or evolves, but pretty exciting project. And I unfortunately missed the Carbondale Emergency Task Force meeting this Monday, but essentially, or last Monday, but it, um, I believe the main topic is still just the, the shot whispers who are trying to get vaccinations to those who want them. So um, thank you to those individuals helping in that way. Any other comments? All right, Mark, any comments from you?
No, thank you.
Okay. With that, uh, we will move on to item number six, which is a public hearing for the new, a new liquor license application for New York Pizza in Carbondale. Location is 901 Highway 133, Unit D, neck, near City Market. So um, Kathy, anything to?
Not really. It's pretty straightforward. They've applied for a new liquor license. They want to, they're going to be going in over in the Carbondale marketplace. And they're looking for a full liquor license. And they have two other businesses, one in Aspen and one in Basalt. So pretty knowledgeable about the business and liquor licenses.
Any questions of the board of Kathy? No? Okay. And I'm guessing, Ryan, is that you we have? Hello?
I believe it's going to be John Schwartz, but who's going to be the manager? John, are you there?
I am here. Uh, we were going to have Kevin, the owner, speak, but I can speak as well if Kevin's not connecting here. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
We've got Earl, Kevin, and Ryan, who are the three owners. And I'm John. I'm the accountant administrative guy. So I think Kevin's going to get on here. One sec.
Uh, we had him on. I don't know where he went. And John and Earl and Kevin, this is usually pretty straightforward. But at the same time, it's good for us to know that you guys are comfortable with our rules and regulations. You know, we know that you guys have been in business. But are you familiar with the differences between Aspen and Carbondale and comfortable with all of our rules and regulations?
My, I'm Earl and I'm on and yeah, we're very comfortable. We feel good about it and we're excited to be in business.
Great. Any questions of our applicants from board? Okay.
Oh, I need help. I can't get in here.
There you go. You're in. We can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, guys. I'm Kevin Jones. Of course, live in Basalt. I've talked to you a couple of times when we were listening to you guys talk about the, uh, the pre-liquor license application for City Market and what went on there. And I thought you guys were very fair with everything you talked about there. Like you said a second ago, we do have two liquor licenses, one in Aspen and one in Basalt. And over the last 20, God, it's been a long time, 28 years of doing this. We've always been beer and wine, pizza. We're very family-friendly, which has been kind of our mantra for, since I was 23 years old, because by quick. Um, and if you guys, it, it's more a question if you guys have any concerns about anything you've ever heard about New York Pizza or anything like that, if you are familiar with us or anything like that. I think we run a family-friendly business. We got the full liquor license only because the state waived the fee for the liquor license, to be honest with you. We're going to be primarily beer and wine. I personally don't have any. I have no great want to have people in there drinking liquor. I just, it's just beer and wine and pizza and food and family-friendly and we're not going to be open till 2:00 in the morning and I'm, I don't have a whole ton to add to that, but I think our reputation kind of precedes us. And I think we've done a good job through the years and I'm super happy to come down to Carbondale. I spend a ton of time down there because I'm a down valley guy, not that far down valley, but mid-valley. And uh, you know, I'm excited to be in Carbondale. And now I don't know how to unmute my thing because I've lost my way on my iPad.
Well, Louise?
Yeah, I just have one question actually, um, for, for Kevin, I guess. Very exciting that that's coming in and seeing all the work that's happening over there. I'm curious if, you know, with COVID restrictions or the summer, will you have tables out front? And if so, will those be allowed beer and wine and how that might, those will have to be controlled in any way?
We don't have a huge space out front of our spot. I, I'm not sure. I haven't even really spoken with the owner of Ming's. But I think the space that's just in, the way the building works, there's a little L-shaped alcove right there with Ming's. And I think it's communal, but I will have some outside seating. I think just four tables will be directly in front of our store. And there is a planter that's in front of it that will kind of mark our little area. It's, it's about a, sorry about this. Hey, Colton, will you open the door, please? That's my son letting my wife and my daughter. There'll be just a small alcove and I think we'll probably have four tables when this COVID experiment is over. I, it's, um, but it will be outside and we hope to actually have a door that just pulls up. So it'll be kind of indoor/outdoor, but hopefully have four tables outside. And hopefully that'll be included in the liquor license approval. It's just, it's even covered underneath a little, um, I guess a little roof that kind of comes out a little bit. So those four tables outside and then whatever's inside also.
Yeah. And in the liquor license, there is a nine-foot, eight-inch extension of outdoor area allowed in the, in the license. So.
Okay. So we'll just, we'll make sure everybody scoots towards the front.
Kevin, you're aware that if you do have liquor out there, that you have to, it has to be a controlled area. Meaning you either have to have um, a little fence or you can't get out through that area.
So do you, do you um, put up small barriers like little structures or something? It, it seems like it's pretty walled in and I know that, in fact, I, I say I know, I would assume that Ming's wants to have, to be able to serve beer and wine.
And then that you get with them and see what they're putting up and maybe you can put the same thing up. So it looks, you know, kind of.
Right. There's a, there's a unit going next to us. I think it's Kathy's and it's a salon or hair or something like that. And I think that if we do that, hi, Faffer. I think that if we do that, we can have a little barricade on our side that just kind of allows people to drink in the area from us over to Ming's, if that makes sense to you. But I'd be happy to talk to you guys or talk to anyone about how to best configure something so that it's, you know, up to code or up to par for you guys. That's not a big deal for me.
Yeah. So Kevin, just, um, I think we, we approved Ming's liquor license. So they're, they're in the know and they've had a liquor license. So it's, it's really not a matter of kind of negotiating, but just know what our requirements are. And by us approving this, we're essentially saying, or you're acknowledging that you'll, you'll comply. So.
I am in saying yes. I will, I will do whatever it takes to serve a few beers out on the porch.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions of the applicant? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? Marty?
Make a, a motion to approve the liquor license for New York Pizza.
I can.
All right. We have a motion by Marty and a second by Erica. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pose say no. Okay, motion passes and thank you guys for investing in Carbondale. I'm sure you'll find it'll be a great investment. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dan. You're the only one I see. So I'm going to mute my thing now and figure this out later. Thanks, guys, for listening to us.
Right. Okay, moving on to item number seven. We're pretty close to on schedule. So Janet, does it look like we have everybody here for this item?
Yes, it does. I've been watching them.
Okay. I'm opening up the applicant list. Okay.
Yeah, Julie, Jeff Spinel.
Brad.
You guys got it. Do you want me to introduce it? Well.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure we have the critical mass and it looks like we do. So Janet, why don't you?
Make sure you get Eric over there because he's going to be the one showing the design.
While we're waiting, I'll remind the folks in our viewing audience that this is a public hearing, so we will allow a public comment. And I would ask that you not use the chat function for anything other than logistical purposes. And when you speak, um, once, once it's time for public comment, you can raise your Zoom hand. And I will take it in the order, actually, we might have that already. And you'll be limited to three minutes. So with that, Janet.
Okay, I'll introduce it. I think Jacque needs to come over. Chuck Mitchell is the last one left on the list. But uh, let me introduce it. And this is an application for a combined preliminary and final plat for parcels three and four of the Thompson Park subdivision. And you're required to hold a public hearing and approve the application or deny it, or you can continue the public hearing. And I think most of you are familiar with this. In April of 2018, P&amp;Z and the board approved a major site plan application for the three Thompson Park parcels. Those were parcels two, three, and four. And that's when the board and P&amp;Z looked at things like setbacks and building design and landscaping and parking. And that application was approved. And at that time, the board also approved a development improvement agreement. And that allowed the construction to proceed on parcel two. And that's what you've been seeing going up these last couple of years. And the applicant would like to now move forward onto parcels three and four. And so this is an application for preliminary and final plat to divide those two parcels into 18 lots. And there would be single, seven single-family homes on parcel four. And that's the parcel directly adjacent to RVR. Those lots range from 4,200 square feet to about 9,950 square feet. And all of the lots meet the minimum lot width and depth. With the exception of Lot 10, it just needs to be adjusted slightly. And there's room to do that. Parcel three, which is on the parcel next to the historic house parcel, that would have four lots and three of the lots would be for a side-by-side triplex. And the lot lines would go along the party wall. So that triplex. And then the fourth lot would be for a stacked triplex. The planning commission reviewed this application at the February 25th meeting and did recommend approval. And so the, the subdivision plat itself is in compliance with the UDC. There are some technical issues that need to be corrected and some plat, plat notes I went on there as far as limiting future additions. The one thing we look at at time of subdivision are fees. Fire district and school district fees are due prior to recordation of the plat. And in addition, the fees in lieu of water rights are due. And uh, there'll be a need to be an adjustment of the fees from what we have in my staff report and what we have in the agreements. Those fees have to be increased for parcel three instead of $8,303. The fee will be about $10,271. Up for parcel four, instead of 4,905, the fee would be 11,957. And the applicants are aware of that. I provided that information, I think, last week. And so the water rights fee would be due at the time of recordation of the plat. My staff report said building permit and that was incorrect, but the agreement itself is correct. So those will be paid before the plat's recorded. A housing mitigation plan was approved by the board in 2018. This decked triplex on parcel three would be deed restricted for affordable housing. And once that building's under construction and they can shoot the party walls, they'll come in for condominiumization and get that condominiumized. And at that point, we would look at the deed restriction for the affordable housing. We dug out the, the conditions for protection of the historic house. We did those when the master infrastructure was going in to construct Louis Lane and Jules Lane from Highway 133 to North Bridge Drive. And when the trails were constructed and there was some work done on, on the house as well. But basically that could be reasonable efforts to minimize the effects of the construction on the house. And I think back in, uh, when we did the master infrastructure, we generally, we videotaped before construction started and then went in after and made sure there was no damage. We did receive, I was going to read those in, we received six letters from the public after this packet was sent out last week. I did send those to all of the Board of Trustees and the applicant team. And those have been made part of the record. And so I recommend approval of the proposed application. It's in compliance with the subdivision conceptual plan that was approved in 2018. And we went ahead and included ordinance for 2021 and a subdivision improvements agreement in your packet for your consideration. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions for you.
Janet, before we go to questions and answers, since all the letters, I, I believe all of them pertain to traffic, could you explain where traffic falls into this level of, of approval?
Right. The, we actually, and Kevin is here. Let me do a quick background and then I might turn this over to Kevin. But in 2018, when we reviewed the development as a whole, we did get a traffic impact study that was done by Felsberg-Holt-Ullwig. And um, at that point, at that time, the traffic impacts of Thompson Park were reviewed. And you know, it was found that the traffic impacts were minimal. And uh, I don't believe we required any improvements. Do you want to go deep into this or do you want to wait?
Mainly, I just wanted you to cover the fact that that was addressed earlier on in the development approval process. And it's not typically part of a plat approval.
No, it was, it was done in 2018, but we'd be happy to answer any questions on that with you.
Okay.
So, but that was done at major site plan review.
Great. Thank you. So um, as Janet said, any questions of Janet on this application? Marty, are you waving? Yep, go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I have a question on Jules Lane. Is that supposed to be a street for vehicular traffic? Or is it supposed to be one-way? Or is it supposed to be a pedestrian bike path or what?
No, Jules Lane, that curves around. That is the street for vehicular traffic. And I think you're probably talking about that, the width in front of the Thompson or in front of the historic house itself, where it gets narrow.
Well, it gets narrow all the way from North Bridge. Well, it gets narrow all the way from North Bridge, going into their development. I mean, I went out there earlier tonight, and it'd be hard put to get two cars on that, if that's supposed to be a, a street for vehicles, never mind pedestrians or bicycles.
So Marty, real quick, that's the first level of pavement, pavement. This gets drainage, curb and gutter, and a second layer of asphalt. Kevin can talk to the travel width, but that was all designed as part of the project, so it had an initial paving to have access through this stage of it. And then once all the utility connections and everything's done, it ends up with a second lift of asphalt and a, a curb and gutter section, so it'll.
Okay, so this is just a poem, no, it isn't gonna stay this way?
No, it, it, the, it'll change. I'll let Kevin just mention real quick what the travel width is on that. It, it is narrow, but that's how it was designed.
Okay.
If you can bear with me, can I come back to that question?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, any other, Ben?
Um, yeah, thanks Janet for all this information. With the sidewalk easement that you added as a condition, can you just clarify where that is? I don't know, looking at drawings, it's hard to, to get that. Can you also just clarify, please? Are we just asking for an easement and not construction of a sidewalk? And if, if we're not asking for construction of the sidewalk, I'd like to know why not.
Actually, it's, so if you look at the parcel right next to the historic house parcel, there's a driveway, I think it's called Jules Drive, that goes into that. It's a dead-end private road. The trail, or the sidewalk, we're calling it, would go from the terminus of that driveway to Jules Lane. So people in the stacked triplex or in the side-by-side triplex don't have to walk toward North Bridge, go around, you know, on Jules Lane, go around the loop, then to proceed to Louis Lane. So it's, it's kind of a shortcut. And I see it being an easement for the benefit of those property owners in parcel four. You know, so that they, so they can get north or south easily. So, do you see that driveway?
Yeah, now I know where you're talking about.
And.
It's really short.
It's really short.
Yeah. And sorry, I interrupted you there. So are we asking for, all I see is easement in the documents. Are we asking for it to be constructed?
Yeah, we're asking for it to be constructed.
Okay, do you think we need to change anything in that language, or maybe I just missed that?
I have the most recent plans. Well, why don't we go ahead and make that a request it?
Okay.
To make sure it's covered.
And my only other question, Janet, and I'll probably just mention this later, but I understand the history of this project, and it goes back even, the annexation was before we adopted the Unified Development Code, but I didn't see in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes, any discussion of the fact that these are all very kind of car-oriented, garage-oriented buildings. And when I look in the Unified Development Code, there's a whole section about residential standards. It says that the primary entrance to a dwelling should be the principal element of the building facade rather than the garage. Street-facing garages are discouraged. Front-loaded garages are encouraged to be located parallel to or behind the plane of the dwelling entry. Non-recessed front-loading garages are discouraged, and it says alley-loaded garages are required on new dwellings with alley access. I know they don't have alley access, but that's because they didn't build an alley. Front-loaded garages are prohibited on lots with alley access. Did the Planning and Zoning Commission, or are you in your talks with them over the years, ever explore ways to de-emphasize the, the very prominent garages on pretty much all these buildings?
Well, the, the, to, to us, the way I, I think P&amp;Z had looked at it over the years is that that private road that goes into that garage area functions as an alley. It's not a public street. So, so it is, so it's a narrow private street, and so the garages are off of that. So, in a sense, it's functioning as garage, having garages off the alley. And then on Louis Lane, which is a public street, there, there are no garages along there. So when you're coming in, going down Louis Lane toward the historic house, you should see the building facades.
But they don't have a front door on that, right?
And that's.
It's actually the back of a building that's made to sort of look like the front of the building, but doesn't function as the front of the building. So the front is actually on the alley and some of the garage, which is sort of the opposite of what the code's trying to accomplish of having a pedestrian-oriented streetscape, and then kind of the traffic and, and parking and trash and all that impacts being sort of concealed on the alley, and as well as on parcel four, the single-family homes are all very traditional suburban, welcome to my garage, my house is kind of over here to the side, development. So was that discussed? That's my main question. I know it's too late to redesign that. For that, I'm just surprised that this keeps happening with the UDC and the Unified Development Code in place.
Yeah. And, you know, that was discussed, and, and they'll go into the design of the units. On some of the parcels, on some of the townhome lots along Louis, you know, there was an option to have the front door face Louis Lane, if my memory serves me correctly, but the applicant team will talk about it a little bit, but a lot of the buyers are opting to have the upside-down units where the living area is on the second floor. So instead of having the bedrooms on the second floor, they have the living room and the kitchen. And it's just, they opted to flip it so that there wouldn't be a traditional front door off of Louis entering into a living room and kitchen.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, just to follow up on Marty's question, the, the width of the road, including the gutter, is ten and a half feet wide in each direction, so twenty-one foot wide lanes outside of parking.
Thanks, Kevin. Marty, do you have a follow-up question to that?
Yeah, so this is gonna keep the speed, hopefully, of any vehicles down, correct?
The width of the road combined with the curvature should keep speeds pretty low through that area.
Okay, and that feeds into North Bridge as well, doesn't it?
Can you say that again, Marty?
That feeds into North Bridge Drive?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks Kevin. Any other questions of Janet or staff? I had a couple, they're really just thoughts, probably for Mark and Janet. So I'm just gonna throw it out there now, and you guys can, can think about it, but given the, I guess, history of maybe not non-compliance, but delayed compliance with various things with this applicant, I was thinking it would make sense to change the, the conditions of approval where they could not apply for any, or they couldn't receive any permit until we receive COs on all the affordable housing, rather than they couldn't begin construction. And then also, I do have some concerns like they did when they built the infrastructure to have some financial security if the Thompson House is damaged or if drainage escapes over onto our property. So what would financial security look like, and do we have the ability to, to request it? Mark or Janet, if you want to speak to that now, great, or you can wait and think about it.
You wanna go, Janet? You want me to go?
Well, I, I'll hit the affordable housing. Yeah. Real quick, the, it's just something I learn, I, I still learn every day with parcel two. When we were struggling with when to issue the CO for the affordable housing unit versus the free market, our agreements weren't that clear. We said that no free market shall receive a CO until the affordable housing units are completed. And so that raised the debate, what constitutes being completed. So when we drafted the agreements for parcels three and four, the ones before you tonight, we made that language more clear, so that no CO for free market until the affordable housing units receive their CO. So we tightened up that language, so we don't get, run into that problem again.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clamp down a little harder and say we wouldn't even issue permits on the free market. Is that allowable?
I'm looking at the town attorney.
Mayor, the town code provides that the ti, under a clause called Timing of Occupancy that's in the Affordable Housing provisions of the UDC, it says that the affordable units must be ready, that, that, no, no, or, no, no later than when the free market units are. So it can be read, you can certainly front-load the affordable. You can't do the free market first, but it doesn't have specific date other than the date the free market becomes available, which we can't be later than. So, you know, I think there is some law of code to potentially front-load the affordable units or create an earlier date. Admittedly, we have not typically done that, but I'm sure we could find examples where on the ground that has actually taken place because of a phasing plan or whatnot. So I guess in order to make that change, we might want to think on a little bit and have an opportunity to discuss it with the applicant team. But certainly, you know, if there were a variance from the affordable housing provisions, then clearly this could be put in there. Absence of variance, again, it's, there, there's no code guidance that's clear. It can be earlier, but doesn't say how much earlier. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question. I, I think it's a maybe, provided if the board would like to go there, that we'd recommend that we get a chance to evaluate it and, and talk to the applicant about it.
Sure, and then Heather, is, is your question on this topic? Okay, great.
So I guess I'm trying to clarify what you're asking for, Dan. So you're saying all three affordable housing units would have to have their CO before we issue a building permit for free market?
Yep. Just, just an idea, but I'm also hearing that the compliance wasn't quite as out of compliance as we thought, but I just feel the need to increase our security on this particular, with this particular applicant, so. And then Mark, what about the financial security on drainage and, and Jeff, or Kevin, feel free to chime in if you feel like that's necessary. If you don't feel, if you don't have concerns about those issues, then I, I don't want to require it, but if we have concerns about damage or drainage issues, then I want to protect ourselves.
You know, on that one, Dan, my thought would be that the master subdivision improvement agreement had certain language in it regarding being reasonable and taking reasonable efforts not to damage the house, and the town could video it to, to track whether there was damage, but there was no additional security or indemnity, as I recall. An indemnity, just a reminder to everybody, is, is a contractual agreement where somebody agrees to be financially responsible if something does happen. So I don't think those additional provisions were in the documents to date, but this is a unique third phase of a project that has a unique subdivision's improvements agreement, and the board does have authority to place conditions on its approval of the ordinances. So this one, a classic lawyer language, but I would also say maybe. But in order to pursue that, I think we would need some sort of technical guidance on what the probability and extent of any possible damage might be from an architectural or engineering standpoint, perhaps, in order to place, have some kind of nexus to what the, what the possible impact is that we're trying to mitigate against. And we don't have at this point a number to attach to that that I'm aware of, but I'll defer to Janet and Kevin on that if they have more information than I do.
Kevin, sorry to put you on the spot, but do you have concerns enough that would warrant us pursuing something like that?
You know, structural integrity of old buildings is not really in my wheelhouse. I think there is some pretty good separation between a lot of the heavy activity that'll be going on with this construction. You know, if it was right next to it, I think it would be higher, but that, that's about all I can offer at this point.
And, and with respect to drainage, I, I know it was mentioned, you don't have any concerns that we'll have, you know, a bunch of water pouring under a foundation that we've put a lot of money into?
No, we've actually modified the drainage to keep it from going as it originally was designed, and that comment you might be seeing in some of my reports and observations has been addressed.
Okay, so, thanks. And Jeff, I see you have your hand up, but we'll give you a chance when you provide your presentation. So any other questions of Janet or Mark or, or anyone on staff? Jay?
Just real quick, the proposed conditions in the, in Janet's memo mirror the exact conditions which were in the master SIA. And those came after much negotiation with the the original developer on it. So there was quite a bit of discussion on that, which ended up with those conditions. Not saying we can't be tougher, but they mirror what we've done to date on the, on the house.
Great. Other questions? Okay, so we will give the applicant an opportunity to present their project. Then we'll have time for trustees to ask the applicant questions. Then we'll have public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing for public comment and deliberate. So without further ado, Jacques or Jeff, I'm not sure who wants to present, but the floor is yours. Or Haley?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start us off. Thanks to the board for your time tonight. Looks like I'm kind of bright in the background, sorry about that. But we've got, I just want to give a quick introduction to our team tonight. We've got Jacques McCall, who's our representative of the developer entity Thompson Park LLC. Jeff Spinel is our project manager for the project. He's been involved with the work on parcel two and everything else in the subdivision from the start, other than the master improvement work that was done by the prior developer, that was Serise Park, and I think it was Gamb Engineering who did the engineering. I'm not sure who did that construction, but that was a prior group that did that work, but the folks on, on the call tonight are, have been involved with all the vertical construction and the infrastructure on parcel two. Eric Smith is our architect. We also have Eric Kavara, our realtor, and then Brad from Jeff's office, who has done all the engineering work. So if there's any specific engineering questions, we've got him here for that as well. So I was gonna touch on the changes we've made to the SIA, and that also appear in the ordinance to address the affordable housing timing. Janet did a good job of explaining why we've tightened that language up, but we certainly understand the timeline for that in light of what had happened and wanted to make sure that that's clear in those agreements. So we understand that those affordable units do need to be ready for occupancy and get those COs prior to any being issued for the free market unit, so that, that is clear to us. And, and we wanted to make sure and understand why that's clear in the agreements and the SIA, or excuse me, and in the approval ordinance. So we've got that in, in two places. And otherwise, I'll let Jeff speak to some of the other possible questions on the Thompson House and how we'll be addressing that with construction. But first, I think we'll let Eric give a general overview of some of the designs we're looking at for the, or what the structures are gonna look like on parcels three and four.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
I'm gonna try to share my screen just to go over a couple of exhibits to just briefly go through the changes we're proposing, if I can. Let me, can you all see the screen here? Site plan?
I, I can't.
You can tell us what to bring up. Oh, looks like it's about to share.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Can you see my cursor moving around?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. For starters, parcel three in this area includes the affordable. For starters, parcel three in this area includes the affordable triplex and the market triplex, and then the single family, of course, are on the other side of the street. The changes that we have proposed with this application really involve, starting with the single family, lowering the roof ridge height down to minimize the shadow impact. The general architecture and character of those houses is similar to what was originally approved. The only change we're really proposing at this point is to lower the ridgeline height to drop the height of the building down and minimize shadow impact. With respect to the parcel three, we've added two surface parking spaces and we've modified the shape of the garages to provide more storage in each garage so that people can park a car, plus have additional space in the garage to store bikes, kayaks, whatever the case may be. Those are really the primary changes. One thing I might address while we're on parcel three is that the timing of the CO, the affordable building shares the same common drive access as the market triplexes. So we believe it's important to be able to build those, construct those at the same time, because if we were to get a CO on the affordable units first, prior to a building permit, this whole area, including the drive, would be torn up for construction, would really preclude access into the garages of the affordable units, because we really need to do those at the same time. So our feeling that the provisions that have been modified by Haley in the agreement, that we have to have a certificate of occupancy on the affordable units prior to the market units allows us to build those sequentially and essentially move people into the market units right after we move people into the affordable units, so that the street, the landscaping, everything is done when they move in. Otherwise, the buyers of the affordable units are going to live through 12 months of fairly significant construction completely around them. So that was why that was crafted that way. As I say, that we've, we've got some additional parking spaces we've added on site. Those are really the primary changes to those units. If I scroll down, can you see the screen with the sections here?
Yes.
The red dashed line on both of these single family units was the original building height on those units. We basically offset the ridge, dropped that ridgeline down to lower the shadow impact on the adjoining buildings. Essentially, the architecture remained the same, but we dropped the roof heights, just minimized the elevations. Those are really the primary changes we've gone through. I'm happy to go through more details on the elevations, but I'm not sure how much time I really need to take on this, but I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Eric. Do you mind stopping, unless the board has any questions? I can't see if somebody has their hand up while you're sharing.
Oh, let me stop the share here, I'm sorry.
Great, it's okay.
Figure out how to do that. Okay, I think you should have it back now.
Yep, thank you. Haley, do you want to keep going through the presentation or?
We'll pass it off to Jeff to just talk briefly about construction management on parcel three in relation to the Thompson House and any other questions you wanted to follow up on, Jeff?
I apologize, my camera's not working for some reason, so I, you don't get to look at my pretty face. The, what we, we will be doing is there will be a construction fence similar to what we used on, on phase one. So it's a six-foot tall chain link fence with screening on it along the property line between the historic house and this new construction. And that will, obviously, will keep people from crossing the property line. To mitigate the drainage, there is, I think Kevin alluded to this, but we have provided for a drainage swale to be between the market triplex and the trail. And that, that ditch will divert any drainage from flowing onto town property. It'll just turn it at that point. And the other thing we'll do is, is put erosion control measures, stormwater protection along that property line as well.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Anything else, Haley, or?
No, I think that's it. One thing, I think Janet mentioned that this would be 18 lots on parcel three and four, but it's actually only going to be 11. There's the four on parcel three and then the seven on parcel four. So I just wanted to clarify that real quick. And then, you know, the subdivision plot is pretty straightforward. It's got the same, you know, plot notes that were carried over that are necessary from parcel two. There will be a public access easement over that Jules Drive to allow for the public access for that sidewalk. And then if, if necessary, to go onto that drive. But the way it's structured is not a through street. We don't anticipate much public use of that, but it is there and accounted for. We don't have a problem with building that, that sidewalk to connect all the way from the north to the south, and that would be part of that easement too. So I think that's it, unless we've got questions, we're happy to answer.
Thanks, Haley and team. And just for the record, my goal was not to punish for the issues with the previous project. So it sounds like the language, and I appreciate Eric explaining the phasing of the, the multifamily. And if our staff doesn't have concern about drainage and impacts, then I'm certainly not going to insist on any sort of indemnity. So thanks for responding to all those. Any questions from the trustees for the applicant? Okay, this being a public hearing, we will open it up to the public to speak on this particular issue, which is specifically the plat approval. Just for the viewing public, we went into much greater detail when we approved the project, the project originally. It's been through the planning and zoning, so it may sound like we're skimming over all kinds of issues, but it's just the timing and what we're specifically approving. So I am not seeing anyone raise their hands. But it's a public hearing, so I want to give folks some time. Again, if you want to speak on this particular issue, raise your Zoom hand. Seeing none, I will close the public speaking. Did I see somebody raise a hand there last minute? I think someone's just messing with me. Okay, we will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the board for questions, comments, and/or a motion. Don't all speak at once. Any concerns, questions? No? How about a motion? I don't know what page the recommended motion is on. This is a rare situation. I'll find the motion to help.
I got it. Move to approve ordinance number four, series of 2021, and the subdivision improvements agreement, approving the combined preliminary final subdivision plat for parcel three and parcel four of the Thompson Park subdivision, including the use of an easement to access the lots along Jules Drive and the shared driveway between lots 10 and 11.
Janet?
Does that include the increased fees and law of water rights that I had mentioned?
My motion would include that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And does your motion, I'm sorry if I didn't hear this, include construction as a condition of approval, construction of a sidewalk?
So yes, including the use of easement to access the lots and construction of the sidewalk along Jules Drive. And the, right, is that where that should insert, I think?
Janet, are you happy with that language?
I'm happy with that. Got it.
Any questions on that motion? Haley, any questions from your point, since we're modifying a little bit?
No, that all makes sense, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of, excuse me, we got a motion from Heather. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, I believe that was a second. Motion by Heather, second by Erica. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Dan, could I just make a comment for Janet? My question about the garages and all that, you know, that's not just my pet issue. Like, I just want to point out that that is a key part of our code. I wouldn't have supported this had this not had such a long history of previous applicants' annexation prior to the unified development code and all that. But I won't be voting for approvals of future projects that just blatantly disregard that part of the code.
Okay, thank you. That's it? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Excuse me, and team.
And now, one other, Janet, that might be interesting is to bring back to planning and zoning just kind of regarding the equitability between affordable housing and free market. I know a lot of the other communities that we're working in, you know, they're really trying to push for very few differences between the affordable housing units and the free market. So, you know, the, you know, big, huge garages and two cars and how they're laying out, I mean, all of those things. And you can see such a significant difference. Let's say in the triplex, for example. So I'd love to see that on your running list for the UDC and planning and zoning also. I think that'd be great.
Okay, thanks again, Janet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we are going to take a seven-minute break, come back at around 7:25, and we will talk about Eighth Street at that time. So we're going to all mute and stop video, and we'll be back at 7:25. Thank you. Well, we'll just wait for the remaining trustees to come back, and then we'll begin. So for the viewing public, know that there's a list of folks that have registered to speak, and I'm going to go down that list in the order in which you signed up. And then if there's anyone else, we'll, you'll be added at the end of that list when it comes time to, for public comment. And Lonnie, Erica, Heather, Luis, Marty, just throw your, your video on when you get back, so I know you're here. There's Erica. Kevin, are you, as soon as we get all our trustees back, are you ready to kick it off?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, we got DJ Heather, Lonnie back. Just waiting on Marty and Luis. I guess it's DJ Luis too, right?
I said not during these meetings.
Okay.
I leave that to Heather.
Marty, are you back yet? Marty, Marty, come in, Marty. We'll give Marty one more minute.
I'm back.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. We are on to... Oh, I lost my... Sorry, everybody. Patience is a virtue. Okay, we are on to item number eight, Eighth Street Options. And just as a reminder, our goal tonight is to give some direction on which way to go. It's not absolutely imperative that we make a decision tonight, so we'll see how the meeting goes. We're going to have an overview from Kevin on a very thorough packet. We're going to give the public an opportunity to share their thoughts. And I would just ask folks, you know, we've read all the emails and letters, so if you could be succinct and speak to the specific issues, I'd really appreciate it. I want to remind everyone that the chat function is just for logistical issues. You know, "I can't hear" or things of that nature, and it's not to discuss commentary, just like in a meeting, an in-person meeting, we don't have people chatting on the side. So, I would ask you to respect that. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kevin to kick us off.
Thank you. I know there is a boatload of information, both in my memo and the packet, and I do not intend to read this to anybody. There was just a few highlights that I wanted to talk about. First off, is the options. You know, the Bike Ped Commission, after their meeting on March 1st, voted to recommend that the Board of Trustees approve Option B with some modifications, which were moving the center line back to where the center of the road is now and maximizing the buffer space between the back of the curb and the edge of the sidewalk. So, what you see from Chloe after I'm done in her presentation, that's what's... That is the work she did based on the feedback from the Bike Ped Commission. You know, there were, there were some requests for information at our March 9th meeting, specifically the raw data and for the speed study, as well as the comments from the public, which were all included in tonight's packet. Some additional parking counts in the area that we undertook to make sure we better understood what was going on. That information is also in the packet. And we were asked what the differences between the area north and south were. We addressed that in the packet as well. And then, the Board asked for some data on other street and sidewalk widths around town. That's also included in here, I'm not going to go through each one. What I will say related to the street widths that are talked about in the packet, that would be from the face of the curb to the face of the curb, where there are curbs on both sides. And it would be from the edge of the pavement to the edge of the pavement, where there's not curbs on either one or both sides, if that makes sense. You know, what we're really hoping to get after the Board has an opportunity to hear from the public is some feedback on how to move forward. To do that, we're going to need, you know, the Board's opinion on the lane widths in the roadway, the parking width, sidewalk width. Do we put a buffer between the back of curb and the edge of sidewalk? Or do we leave it attached? And, you know, depending on the decision of that, then what would you like to see done with that buffer area? And we can talk more about that when we get into that discussion. And then, kind of answering the question of, does it need to be a consistent design, both north and south of the trail? Right now, what's proposed, or what's recommended by the Bike Ped Commission is. But I do think that it'd be worth spending just a little bit of time thinking about, once we get to that point. You know, just a reminder from a cost perspective, Option A that was presented at the March 1st Bike Ped Meeting, we're estimating around $500,000. Option B, about, as it was presented, about $685,000. And as the modifications took place, the one that Chloe's going to present, we think will add about $125,000 to that $685 cost. And that's due to just additional conflicts with vegetation and utilities. But again, this is concept level. I can't speak to, will this tree be impacted, or what will happen in this specific location? But we will get to that point, following direction from the Board. So, with that, I think I'll turn it over to Chloe, if that's okay?
Yeah. Any quick questions, Kevin, before Chloe takes over? Ben?
Kevin, the one street I was really curious about the comparisons on, and I'm sorry I hadn't gotten into that detail when I talked to you last week, but that's not in here, is Main. What's the driving lane width on Main about? Like, excluding parking, what the driving line width?
Let me do a little research, and I will answer that after Chloe's presentation, if that works.
Sure, thanks.
Chloe, with Alter Planning and Design, thank you for joining us. And the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Thanks to the Board for taking the time and inviting me to present on this project that I know is very important to the town and has gotten a lot of attention. I'm going to share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So, I believe that most, if not all of you on the Board, are pretty familiar with the process that we have taken with the Eighth Street project since the beginning of last year. So, I'm going to, kind of quickly go through the options that we've presented. If you have any questions about the process, please let me know. But just out of respect to everyone's time, I'm going to go through kind of where we've been since March of this year. So, as Kevin mentioned, the options that were presented to the Bike Ped Trails Commission on March 1st were this Option A, that keeps Eighth Street pretty much the same, curb to curb, narrows it slightly, keeping 10 and 1/2-foot travel lanes in each direction that would be shared with bicyclists, and keeping 8-foot parking lanes. We would install 6-foot sidewalks, and just based on where it is along the street, most of the sidewalks shown in Option A were attached. But south, between Main and Colorado or Main and the trail, there are areas where there's an existing mainscape buffer, and we would not take that out in Option A. Option B that was presented was removing parking on the west side, keeping it on the east side, still with 10 and 1/2-foot shared travel lanes for both confident cyclists and vehicles to use. And the removal of that parking on the west side would allow for 9-foot sidewalks, these say 9 and 1/2, but that accounts for a curb face. 9-foot sidewalks that would allow for comfortable side-by-side walking, strollers, kids traveling on their bikes next to walking parents, and less confident cyclists, or cyclists that just didn't want to ride in the street, would be able to comfortably ride on the sidewalk that would essentially be a side path or trail facility. These are just kind of explaining in more detail some of those features for each option. For, for both options, really, we would suggest, if they were attached sidewalks, to do a rolled curb. With the number of driveway crossings that are on Eighth Street, this would allow for the sidewalk to be a consistent level surface, rather than having to ramp up and down constantly at the driveway crossings. Would create a bunch, more comfortable and safe experience for people walking and riding along the sidewalks. And it would be a curb such that cars traveling into their driveways off of Eighth Street would not have issue traversing it. So, for Option A that was presented, the pros was, you know, a continuous and adequate width sidewalk in both directions for people walking, and parking is maintained. Shared lane markings would indicate that bicyclists should be traveling in the center of the traveled lanes. And curb extensions were also proposed as part of this option at intersections to narrow the roadway and slow travel speeds with that narrowed roadway. With high parking utilization on both sides, when parking is highly utilized on both sides, that will also slow speeds. But when parking is not well utilized, such as during the day when people are working, those speeds could be similar to how they are today in those middle sections. Considerations, snow and trash removal would operate the same with this option. Mail delivery, some mailboxes, especially north of the Rio Grande Trail, would need to be moved to outside of the sidewalk path. Otherwise, operation could remain the same as it is currently. New curb and gutter would be installed on both sides, and there would be impacts to some trees, some property frontages that are within the right-of-way and utilities on both sides. And all three options have these same kind of impacts. It's just the severity of them differs between the three. And Kevin mentioned the estimated cost, and this is very high-level concept cost. We don't have detailed survey for Eighth Street, and so we can't take into account every utility impact or trees that we, we can't just see on the aerial. So, I just want to make that clarification. Some differences for the wide sidewalk and parking removal on the west side option. As I mentioned a couple slides ago, this would allow for more comfort for people walking side-by-side to pass each other. For people who, or children who choose to cycle on the wide sidewalk, they would have room to comfortably pass people walking. And one of the major cons with this option is that there would be that parking lots on the west side. Similar considerations with this one. For trash pickup, the placement of bins would need to be considered after construction to minimize impact to the sidewalk and not have bins obstructing the path of people walking and biking. Mail delivery, this option would have more mail impacts. And with the wider sidewalk, it might be an opportunity to shift to mail clusters for consolidated mail delivery instead of multiple stops and having the mail delivery block traffic or obstruct the sidewalk. And Kevin mentioned, this one has a higher cost, and that's largely due to wider sidewalks, more concrete. But there would be a few more utility impacts with this option as well. So, the option that was moved forward at the March 1st Bike Ped Trails Commission meeting was essentially Option B with the wide sidewalks. But to shift the center line to where it is existing, as it was proposed earlier, the section was centered within the right-of-way, and that had a few benefits. It allowed for some, some trees and utilities to be avoided and left a little bit more space outside of the project section for flexibility. And so, this option, shifting it to the existing center line and using the additional space to add a buffer space between the sidewalk and the traveled lane on the west side, is the option that was moved forward at the March Commission meeting. That buffer space would be a 3-foot minimum between the sidewalk and the roadway on the west side. This option and the original Option B also have curb extensions at the intersections. The main reasoning, as, you know, as far as I understood it, to keep the center line was to minimize the feel that moving traffic was going to be closer to those houses on the west side and give a little bit more buffer there, since the parked cars are going to be removed. Same, similar considerations. However, maintaining the existing roadway center line does create more utility, tree, and frontage impacts than the original Option B. Because there, one, this buffer space widens the section, and where there were opportunities, kind of hold back of walk in some locations, that has now shifted, and we're impacting utility poles that were at the existing back of walk and are no longer in this new design. This cost that's shown here, again, it's very high-level, but there's also... It could be higher than this, especially if that buffer space were, was desired to be landscaped and a new irrigation system and routine labor and maintenance on that landscaping. That would definitely bring the cost up for this option. This is kind of a side-by-side comparison of the two, three options, repeating much of what I just said. And I do have all of the options on the aerial pulled up and ready to share, if you'd like to see them kind of along the street. So, that's all I had formally prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board, or hang tight as we let the public comment.
Thank you, Chloe. Any, any a-hazs or things that you want to mention that you learned that, I don't know, feel like would really inform us? Anything that wasn't in your presentation?
I don't think so. I, I will say, I think that all of these options, you know, when we first went to public, our second round of outreach, where we first brought concept options to the town, they were a little bit more... The options we presented, you know, it was bike lanes or a two-way cycle track, and those were directly pulled from the first round of comments. And I do think that where we ended, landed here with these two, three options, which were results from the comments, I think that they are appropriate for, for the town and the size of Carbondale and similar facilities that, that people are already comfortable riding on in Carbondale. And I think that implementing these with curb extensions and, and even pavement markings, I think that slowing down the perceived speeding issue, the speed study that we did did not show a... the speed study that we did did not show a, a very persistent speeding issue along Eighth Street. But I do think that these improvements would one, create a, you know, a much more comfortable environment, especially for people walking along Eighth Street and, and those cycling. And I think that, you know, they'll, they'll make it visually a little bit nicer too. So I think those are maybe not big aha lessons learned, but just kind of how I feel about how this project, project went.
Okay. Well, thanks, Chloe. Thanks for all your work on this project. Always probably more than you originally anticipated.
COVID definitely, definitely changed the, the course of the project quite a bit. But I think that it generated a lot of really good public interest and public comment, which makes for a successful project in my eyes.
Great. And Matt Guarick, I apologize, I didn't give you any heads up notice, but as the Chair of Bike Ped and Trails, would you like to offer any summary thoughts? You have your time later if you want to as well, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity to share any thoughts. I know there are other members of the committee that'll be speaking, but I, I forgot that we had a recommendation from the committee when I was thinking about how this agenda will lay out. So I can't see, maybe Chloe, for a second, stop sharing your screen and.
Yes, happy to.
Everybody.
Hey, Dan, can I jump in real quick? I did get a text from Matt saying that he is having wifi issues, so he's not on the meeting.
Okay, yep. Okay. With that, I will turn it over to board questions of Kevin or Chloe. Anything before we go to the public? Heather?
So two questions. On option A, Chloe, were you saying that the, just to clarify, where some places it's six foot sidewalk and, you know, listed as kind of the buffer is behind that, behind back of sidewalk? And then in other places, buffer is between back of curb and sidewalk? Are, are you saying that basically that would, you know, vary less in a uniform way and more in a, it would depend on what the existing condition and we'd try to match it in places? Is that what you were trying to describe?
Um, kind of, I think. So when, in the plan view of option A, when I was laying these out, I was considering both, you know, what we want to give people walking and biking, but also what would make any of these options more feasible and, and palatable? And so there are some, some places where on the west side mostly between Cleveland Place and Main Street, there's, there is an existing buffer landscaped tree zone. And so we wouldn't want to remove that just to put in a new, replace it with a six foot sidewalk. And when we get a, like, if, if any of these, these designs move forward with a detailed survey, there, there may be opportunity with option A to, to still avoid utility impacts and taking out mature trees and add in a buffer space within the right of way. But as it was laid out in the plan view, just based off of an aerial, the majority of option A is showing an attached six foot sidewalk with no landscape buffer.
Okay. So, so yeah, where, where basically attached sidewalk would be the recommendation unless there was cause to, to detach it. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I, I guess because my follow-up was what do you do in three or four foot buffers?
Right. And I think that that's one of the questions that Kevin would like answered if a buffer is desired. Because three feet is not a lot of space, especially to plant a tree. You could do some, some low vegetation opportunities. But in a three foot, and especially three foot or less, your options would be maybe some patterned pavement. So with a three foot buffer, the options are limited and where it's existing, we wouldn't want to take that out, but we'd have to look at those opportunities as they come up, I think.
And then I just had one more about costs. So I guess either you or Kevin could answer this. As you put those costs together, is that really just sort of cost of, you know, call it back of sidewalk to, to, well, frankly, to curb, right? Roll curb because we're not tearing up our concrete Eighth Street. So it's really just that cost. It doesn't kind of address anything related to the true survey, right? So how you then patch back into driveways or how you, you know, remove fences or how you like, in any of those cost scenarios, it's just strictly the, the kind of straightforward cost of concrete sidewalks and curb, right?
So it does take into account the removal of, of the existing sidewalk and some existing concrete removal because we would, we would not be taking, you're right, we would not be ripping up Eighth Street, but we would be cutting into it to, especially in option B where we're taking out parking on the west side, we'd be cutting into Eighth Street. So it takes into account those removal costs and it takes into account the, the construction cost of the new sidewalk and curb extensions. And it does take into account some of the impacts as well as a good sized contingency. And so there is some unknown built into those costs. But you are correct that it doesn't take into account, you know, very detailed things that we would not know without a detailed survey.
Cool. Thanks. That's it.
Thanks, Heather. Ben? And then Louise?
Yeah, just might, as the liaison of the Bike Ped Trails Commission, since Matt's not here, just give a really quick perspective. And first of all, I'll just say, you know, Eighth Street has been, as long as I've been on the board, which is five years now, it's always been on our capital improvement plan, on the five year capital improvement plan. And for years, it was always a year five. And then the next year, it'd still be a year five. And then the next year, it'd still be a year five. So I just kind of want people who are commenting and are involved in this process to understand that we didn't just come up with this. It's been known for a long time that this is a major corridor that really doesn't function well for, for anything other than cars and arguably doesn't function great for cars either and needs some improvements. We've also always known it's going to be really expensive, which is part of why it was always kind of a few years out. And we've known it was going to be contentious and difficult. So I give credit to this board for taking on some of these difficult issues and having these difficult conversations and saying, we're going to do this. We're not just going to hold it out there at infinitely five years in the future. So that's, that's one thing. Another thing is, as far as the Bike Ped Trails Commission process, it's, it's taken about a year. I remember that when I first met Chloe was at the last First Fridays that we had, which was March of 2020, I guess, right before everything shut down. She had a little booth and people started stopping by. So that really changed our process. But what she helped us do was really kind of cast a wide net and say, what are all the ways we could possibly do this? And through public input and the commission's really great involvement, we've narrowed it down to these two. So I also want people to know, if somebody's thinking, well, why not do bike lanes? Why not do angled parking? We actually looked at all those and these are the two that make the most sense. And so I also want people to know that I, I know that there, some people are feeling like they're not being heard. People have been very influential throughout this process and getting us to these two options. And then that there's a difference between being heard and being agreed with. So I think that clearly the people who live along Eighth Street are, are very concerned about parking and very concerned about speed and didn't feel, a lot of them didn't feel like the, the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission recommendation addressed those concerns in the right way. But they were heard. And then the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission made a decision that maybe everybody didn't agree with. And then we'll make a decision tonight where we take all that into consideration and, and look at other things as well. And the last thing I'll say is just to, we have to keep in mind what Eighth Street is in our town. It's a major corridor. Part of it's a truck route, part of it's not. We'll probably talk about that at some point. It's a bypass for Highway 133 in case of an emergency or closure on 133, which we have experienced just in the past couple of years with that sinkhole for a little while. So I think Kevin, our Public Works Director, has that perspective and I think that we have to honor that. It's not a quiet little residential street. It's not a dead end street at a cul-de-sac. It's a major street and it's a busy street and it always has been and it always will be. And it's one of the only streets that the town upgraded to concrete, I believe in the 1980s as sort of a statement of this is a major street, that and Maine, and I'm not sure if there are any others. So as we think about all this and we think about its use, it matters a lot to the people who live along there and we respect that and hear those concerns. It also matters to people who don't live along there, who might not be motivated enough to be here at the meeting tonight. But it's a town street that's a critical, critical street and has to serve a lot of functions. So I think that the, the commission did a great job, very patiently, taking in a lot of comments, considering a lot of options. And we'll hear more about that, but hopefully that helps a little bit of context.
Thanks, Ben. And I would add to that, as, as Kevin outlined, I don't think anybody expected that regardless of what option we go with, that we're just going to say that's the option done. There's, you know, a lot of tweaking. So Kevin laid out that ideally tonight, we provide guidance on parking width, roadway width, buffer width, sidewalk width, how we treat the crossing of the Rio Grande Trail and Eighth Street and the difference between what I would call North Eighth Street and South Eighth Street. There's nothing set in stone that we have to treat them similarly or that we have to do work on one side or the other, you know? The option could be not to do anything, although I highly doubt that will be the option for the whole corridor. So anyway, I'm not, or Louise, did you have your hand up too? Did you want to make it, have a question?
I did have one question about the design, but yeah, I mean, echoing Ben's comments, I, I know that the process was a challenge, obviously during all of COVID. And I want to thank, obviously Bike Ped and Trail Commission members, Ben Alta, Town Staff, and everyone who made their voices heard during this process. I think, you know, looking at, at speed, much like parking, it's a town wide issue. And I know that, you know, throughout the town of Carbondale, when you're off 133, you know, people are always concerned about people speeding, whether it's down Main Street, Second Street, Eighth Street. But if we could address that as, as a concern here, I think that would be great. I, I don't disagree that it's a major thoroughfare, but at least if people are going down very slowly, it doesn't take, to me, honestly, a study that people speed all over town. The one question I did have is, is in terms of the design, if, if bulb outs were ever considered at intersection, places where utility poles were, places bracing where people can park to kind of create pinch points to help reduce speed? So that's just kind of one question I have about the overall presentation and design.
Yes. And sorry, in the slides that I showed, I did not show any curb extensions in there, but we do have in all three options curb extensions at the intersections. And in option A, where there's parking on both sides, we have one kind of mid-block curb extension shown to, at a T intersection to kind of further narrow the roadway there. And I think that there would be opportunities to, to add more of those in the options as well. But yes, we do have curb extensions to narrow the roadway at the intersections.
Thank you.
All right. Marty and then Kevin.
Yeah, I'll be brief. First off, how long did the speeding survey go for?
I believe it was two weeks. Kevin can speak more in detail to, to the exact date.
Okay. And on your bulb outs or curb extensions, whatever you want to call them, what did you, I mean, is it just going to be concrete? Were you planning on having a bench or are you planning on having some type of plant growth or something? And the reason why I'm asking the question is, it's fine to put them in, but then we have to worry, be concerned about the maintenance of them.
Right, yes. And that is a very good point. They, they're shown in the plan view of each option as mostly paved. I think there would be flexibility in how those spaces are, are constructed. If they're, you know, if it made sense and if the maintenance was willing to be done to put in a tree. Some are all of the, the curb extensions. I think that would be possible. But I think that it's something, it's a design detail that isn't fully fleshed out in the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Kevin?
So I just wanted to quickly get back to Ben's original question about the width of Main Street travel lanes. I took a quick look and I'm gonna, these numbers are going to end in ish because I didn't run out there with a tape measure. But if you think about the intersections, like from one, one bulb out to the other is about 24 feet. So that'd be 12 foot lanes. And then I also looked where there's parking and where we have the parking striped, it's about that same distance between the stripes toward traffic on one side to the stripes toward traffic on the other. So 12 feet ish is the answer to that.
Any other questions before we move on to public comment?
Dan, I think Marty asked about how long the traffic counters were out.
Yeah, right. Thanks.
They were out. I gotta do some quick math in my head. I believe about 12 days south of the Rio Grande Trail and about 10 north. We had a malfunction with the one on the north end and ended up having to pull it out sooner than the one on the south. But it was still around 10 days.
Marty?
Yeah, one quick question. Did we look and see, Chloe, what other towns or municipalities do in terms of their street planning?
For, for traffic calming and, and bike pet improvements, is that?
Yeah, multimodal, speed calming, et cetera.
Yeah. So in our first round of public outreach, I included picture examples of, of many improvements that are, are used successfully in other communities. And I showed photos, many photos that were local examples in Glenwood or in the Willets neighborhood with the chicanes and examples in, I think I had one from, from Aspen. And but short answer, yes, we were, we did show examples of options that other communities have used to kind of get a first gut feel of what people in the town would like, would have liked to consider for Eighth Street. And that's how kind of our first set of options were developed. And seeing those, many residents kind of preferred what the, what we're showing now in these final concepts.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Okay. So we're going to switch to public comment. And again, we're going to go in order by how folks signed up for the meeting. So I'll just rattle off the first handful of names so you can prepare. We're going to go Jaleen, then Blake, then Brian. And then I believe Nikki, Nicolette and Nancy are sharing their space. So we'll start off with that group and then I'll rattle off the next one. So I see Jaleen, big old smile on her face. Again, just for the public, please know you have three minutes. Just tell us where you're from. We know you're from Carbondale. And direct your comments to me and please be respectful. Thank you. So Jaleen, take it over.
Yes. Good evening. And mostly I just want to say to all of you.
Yes, good evening. And mostly I just want to say to all of you, um, after, we've all, you know, been together a lot and discussed a lot. And we, every one of you came to us when we asked you to come. And Kevin also, you've done so well at greeting or meeting with us and listening to us. I do feel like you've listened to us and I just want to thank you. And I, it's been quite the process just to see it go, um, because I've been kind of involved since the, a year ago. And, uh, I just want to say thank you because I don't know that I could do the, your job. Anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you, Jaleen. I really appreciate you saying that. Uh, and I appreciate all the neighbors' time hosting our, our conversations. Okay, uh, Blake and then Brian. And Lori and Rose, I see your hand up, but we're, we're just gonna keep going in order. Um, uh, Rose, you're on the list. I don't think Lori is, so I'll add Lori, but go ahead, Blake.
Yeah, hi, thanks, Dan. Um, so, uh, just a few questions. I know I talked to Kevin last year when we were doing the survey and Kevin said to me at the time that option C, the do-nothing option, had begun garnering the most votes. So I'm curious as to what happened with that. As to what Ben said about the street not functioning, um, I have to disagree. I live right on the corner of Eighth Street and the Rio Grande Trail. I'm a cyclist. I walk, I drive. I've never had a problem with any mode of transportation. My biggest concern is that if we do narrow the streets, we don't do a great job of removing snow and ice during the winter time. There tends to be a buildup of snow in the middle to make the streets even more narrow. So if we were to narrow the streets, I'm concerned about that snow ridge that develops and, um, the impact that that would have. As for cyclists, I am a cyclist. I cycle every morning and afternoon with my dog. I've never had a problem in terms of safety. So I don't understand the idea of trying to build out sidewalks. This is not the Chums-Leezay. This is not a giant boulevard. The sidewalks do absolutely just fine. Um, I would again stress not to remove any trees on Eighth Street, especially, um, mature trees. I'd also stress not to remove any parking on Eighth Street. Um, I don't think that we have a pedestrian, I don't think we have a, an, an issue with any cars. Um, if we're concerned about safety, the speed limit is already twenty miles an hour. And frankly, it's about as fast as a bicycle can go. So I think there's a nice blend on the two. And again, I just really hope that option C, that it seems like most of my neighbors are interested in, that's not here anymore, of do-nothing is, um, is considered. Um, and if not, then leaving it as, uh, as it is for the most part, without removing any trees or, uh, parking spaces would be my recommendation. So thank you for my time.
Thanks, Blake. Uh, and we'll, you know, we don't have time to address every question as they come, but we'll try and address concerns when we offer final comments. But I did my best to try and capture your thoughts. Okay, um, Brian Hightower?
Can you hear me?
Yep, welcome, Brian.
Uh, with all due respect to Mr. Baumfach, um, I've lived on the corner of Eighth and Lincoln for eleven years and it is a quiet place. It's a safe part of town. Every once in a while, somebody speeds, but also every once in a while, someone jaywalks and every once in a while, someone throws a cigarette butt out their window. When I got the memo on my door, I was a little bit horrified, really grateful, um, to, uh, the mayor for having a conversation when I was kind of in my angst. Um, thanks, Dan. But I started doing a little bit of research. I was out with a tape measure for, uh, a lot of, of time in, in the recent past. Um, nine feet is almost the size of the Rio Grande Trail. And so what you're asking for Eighth Street to become is wide enough on both sides as wide as, as the Rio Grande Trail. And that seems, um, so over the top. The sidewalk in front of the Alpine Bank on one thirty-three, for, um, comparison, is only six feet wide. Um, Village Road only has a sidewalk on one side and it's six feet wide. I, I just don't understand the, um, why this, the size requirements that are being looked at in option B, um, are even on the table. ADA compliance is a four-foot sidewalk, which is what is outside this, the east side of Eighth Street, which is where I live, and there's five feet on the other side. Um, so that's the size issue. Uh, the, taking more sidewalk, is gonna take a lot of vegetation, it's gonna take trees away, it'll take all those border things. I, Chloe's option of, uh, putting pavers as like a, a landscape option, it, it's just not with the character of where I live. Um, okay, sorry, uh, speeding. Today I talked to a sergeant at the Carbondale Police Department who's been here for six years. He said he's been on, uh, Eighth Street a bunch. He was just here today. Occasionally pulls people over, but he kind of echoed what I experienced, which is, which is that every once in a while, somebody speeds. But for the most part, people are going, according to him, about twenty-three, twenty-four miles an hour. I haven't seen the report from the speed traps you guys did in the study. But, uh, interestingly, he also said that in his six years, he's never received a call for a vehicle versus, uh, pedestrian incident or a vehicle versus bike incident. The parking issue, I find it a little bit privileged, um, of a position to suggest that families don't need the parking around here. And to suggest they can go somewhere else or, uh, I just don't know what the option is. Some have been told they could go to Fourth Street and walk over. Um, I just find that a little bit, I just, it's, it's untenable, um, in my opinion. So I, I guess those are the main points, um, that I wanted to make. I just feel like the pictures, um, that Chloe just, just showed, with all due respect, she said they're appropriate. I, I just can't think of anything more inappropriate for this place than to change the character of this town. It, that, all the concrete involved.
Right, I need you to wind down your comments.
Showed, yep. All the concrete involved would change the character of this place and it seems like you're creating a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. All right, and just please everyone be aware that Chloe's our consultant. She's tried to put designs together that she heard from various people. So they're not necessarily Chloe's designs, although, um, um, you're the author. Okay, so we have Nikki, I believe you're gonna speak on behalf of, uh, Nicolette and Nancy? Is that correct? Nikki? Nikki, it looks like you need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you.
And Nikki, am I correct that you, you are gonna speak on behalf of?
I mean, there are three of us who would like to speak.
Okay, all right.
And, um, okay, so I know that I'm speaking to the Board of Trustees and also to other people out there who are listening. So I'm the co-chair of the Carbondale Age Friendly Community Initiative. And really I'm here to ask the Board of Trustees to consider a broader, more far-reaching lens than the immediate and very real concerns of the residents living in and around Eighth Street. Because the decision that you're gonna make is bigger than the sidewalks or parking. It's really about Carbondale's future. In 2030, fully one in five Americans is gonna be over the age of sixty-five. And by 2034, there are going to be more older adults in this country than there are children. In Carbondale, twenty percent of our population is gonna be older adults in less than twenty, in less than ten years. And aging in place requires us to plan for a time when we are no longer able to safely operate vehicles. And according to the American Automobile Association, we are gonna outlive our ability to drive by seven to ten years. And mobility is the key indicator for our healthy aging. According to the CDC, optimal mobility is defined as being able to safely and reliably get where you want to go, when you want to go and how you want to get there. In order for us to remain independent, some of us may rely on a variety of assisted mobility devices such as canes, walkers, wheelchairs, and sometimes with caregivers alongside. We will be using the same multimodal corridors as parents with strollers who are walking their dogs and children on bicycles. For those of us who love to cycle, we may have to give up our two-wheelers for three-wheelers. Currently fifteen percent of the residents at Crystal Meadows own their own tricycles, which are wider than a wheelchair. Most are afraid to ride in traffic and use the sidewalk. But we cannot maintain our independence alone. Planning for personal mobility and self-sufficiency can only occur if a town creates a safe infrastructure to make this possible. CAFKE is invested in helping making Carbondale more age-friendly for people of all ages and all abilities. And while everyone at this meeting is not sixty-five or older, today's younger residents hopefully are going to become tomorrow's older citizens. But our growing demographic is not the only lens we hope you will use as you make your decision. At a recent CAFKE meeting with Town Manager Jay Harrington, we asked, "What is the biggest long-range challenge for Carbondale?" His answer was climate change. As you contemplate the input that you receive on the challenges of making the Eighth Street a more safe multimodal corridor, we asked you to consider what the boards, commissions, town government have unanimously articulated, a vision that Carbondale be less auto-centric because it will be better for our health, our safety and Mother Earth. And that vision is included in Carbondale's comprehensive plan that says it's a small, compact town with attractive multimodal options that are going to reduce personal automobile and therefore contribute to better air quality. And the request for the new proposal, for the new comprehensive plan states total costs and aging in place are both high priorities.
Nikki, please point your comments down.
Okay, it's also the intent that Carbondale not to be auto-centric is in the 2017 Environmental Bill of Rights, the 2017 Climate and Health Action Plan. And Carbondale is recognized by AARP as an age-friendly community and by the World Health Organization as a livable community. And by becoming so recognized, the community's elected leadership has made the commitment to actively work toward making our town a great place to live for people of all ages. We hope that the trustees will look at this infrastructure challenge with a broad lens, provide the community with a multimodal corridor that truly meets the needs of all people, of all ages and all abilities, and live into your stated visions and hopes for a town now and in the future. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, Nikki. Nicolette?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, very good. Um, I'm also, um, a part of CAFKE and speaking on behalf, kind of have a special group and that's people with disabilities. Um, speaking for myself, I avoid Eighth Street on my bicycle because there's no safe for me, place for me to ride and I'm hearing impaired and I really don't like being startled by cars and big trucks. And, um, generally my choice is to have to go around on the bike trail on one thirty-three, which makes for some big loops. Luckily, at this point, I can still get on my bike. Um, I worry about living in Carbondale because we don't have in-town transit. I now have three friends who've moved to Grand Junction for that very reason. Um, they're not able to drive, they're not able to drive at night and they just haven't been able to get around Carbondale. And, um, if you don't ride a bike and you don't drive, that pretty much leaves walking. And that's been a concern for CAFKE. We walked the whole town. We did a, we did a walking survey of the night routes, the priority routes, and we noticed lots of dark places where it's not lighted at night and sidewalks that stop and start. But we really chose Eighth Street as being the priority because, as you've, as you've stated, it's the, it's the other corridor to get from one end of town to the other if you don't go on one thirty-three. So, um, speaking for people who have disabilities, uh, and that tends to be most of us as we get older, I think it's really important to look to the future here. About one in four adults now have a disability and as we get older, mobility is a problem for one in seven adults. And then, uh, by the time you're sixty-five, about half of us have disabilities. So this, um, I don't feel that the corridor as it is, is at all safe for me on a bicycle or, um, wa, it's sort of safe walking if it's not dark, but there's sidewalks that end and start and places you fall in the ditch. So I, I commend the, um, trustees for taking this on. It's always difficult. Um, but, uh, thanks for having a vision and thanks for having the courage to take it on.
Thank you, Nicolette. The next five, we have Nancy Peterson, Sherry Gaynor, Jerry and Stephanie Gillespie, and then Rose Rosello. So Nancy?
Hey, hi, everybody. I'm Nancy Peterson and I am also a member of the Carbondale Age Friendly Community Initiative. And I'm just gonna wrap this up by telling you about the eight principles of sidewalks. I know it's something you've always wanted to know. So number one, walking is the most democratic way to commute. It's the oldest and it's the most common mode of transportation in the world, not to mention being a far healthier option for both people and cities and towns. Number two, walking may be considered an activity that traverses all other social practices. Accessible pedestrian mobility, besides guaranteeing the right to come and go, also contributes to ensuring access to other social rights such as education, health and culture. Number three, while not everyone can afford a car or knows how to drive, or should be driving, walking is universally accessible. Number four, walkable streets bring people together who might not otherwise meet. Number five, sidewalks are for everyone, making no distinction about who uses them. Public sidewalks should be accessible to all, including wheelchair users, pregnant women, older adults, children on scooters and people with special mobility needs. A sidewalk that is not intuitive and easy to use, sorry, a sidewalk that is intuitive and easy to use is wide, continuous, incorporates curb ramps, tactile surfaces to help people with impaired vision. Number six, the quality of sidewalks should be a priority within public policies to encourage more people to walk and create an attractive and inviting public space as well as one that is safer for walking. Number seven, streets with more life provide a greater sense of security, benefit local commerce and increase quality of life and the sense of citizen benefit, which in turn leverages a sense of ownership and care for public spaces by the population. And number eight, there are myriad benefits for towns that value and enhance the quality of their sidewalks. They have the potential to be socially inclusive as, once accessible, they increase the general autonomy and safety of the population. Sidewalks also encourage a healthier lifestyle while also being environmentally beneficial. By promoting alternatives to motorized transport, they contribute to reduction in the emission of pollutant gases. Let's hear it for sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Sherry?
There we go. Perfect. Okay, there we go. Hi, everyone. Um, I again want to sort of mirror and say thank you to all of you for actively listening. Because I know you have been doing that and doing a lot of reading and I too do not envy your jobs. So thank you for that. Um, I, I think, you know, um, Blake and, and really actually Brian, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Brian or Emily, um, really mirror a lot of my own feelings. Um, I've lived on Eighth, all told, since nineteen ninety in various different homes. I've lived on Eighth, all told, since nineteen ninety in various different homes. And really, honestly, I don't feel like Eighth is much different since nineteen ninety than it is now, except we have a heck of a lot more cars. And I think the density of Cleveland Place really complicates what it is we're trying to do here. From what I understood from meeting with Kevin, who again I thank very much for coming out to meet with some of us, i-if I'm understanding it, the nine foot plus three feet is actually twelve more feet of concrete on one side. Is that correct? Chloe?
Go ahead. The math is correct.
Okay, so that's, that's twelve. So here we are, a community that values climate change. But we're going to be creating essentially a bike path on a major thoroughfare, which we've all admitted that eventually is going to be the elephant in the room, which is industry place to Merrill Lynch, because we have a truck stop in the middle of our town. So I just want that on the record as well, and I just don't see a need for that much concrete. And I'm sixty-one and hearing impaired, so I do just fine walking all over the bike path, which is a major thoroughfare from Aspen to Glenwood and can get us anywhere in Carbondale that we want to go. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, next up, Jerry and Stephanie Gillespie, Rose Rosello, John Rooney, and then Ron Kokish.
Hi.
Can you hear us?
We can.
Awesome. Well, we're Jerry and Stephanie Gillespie, and we've owned a house there on Eighth Street for thirty-two years. And we also do everything like Brian and Blake stated earlier. We ride our bikes up and down Eighth Street all the time and never had a problem. There are a few of those speeders every now and then, but it's, might, might use speed bumps more than the revamp the whole system here. And I don't think that much concrete on each side is gonna be in line with what the town looks like. And the sidewalk, nine feet, that's huge, or six feet even, is huge, and they just don't need that much. We barely ever pass anybody walking there. And if we do come into somebody, even with a stroller, you can get around them just fine. And everybody rides up and down Eighth Street, and the speed limit's twenty miles an hour. And I think it feels safe. We've actually lived here this long, and I've never locked my truck, and I've never gotten anything stolen, except for the bike out front where someone took it downtown because they didn't want to walk. But we got that one back. And I have a big concern about the snow removal. Once it piles in the middle, like they say, it's already tight as it is. And then what are we gonna do, once you do the sidewalk? Where, where do we go to park? Like you said, we're supposed to park two or three blocks away and then walk back, and they have their own parking problems on where they're trying to push us off. So we're gonna lose our parking. And it also, also the cost bothers me too. That's a huge amount of money for the taxpayers to pay for something that I don't think is really needed. And I think my wife would like to say something.
So I have a question as to why we need sidewalks on both sides. Like my husband said, we've had a place here on Eighth Street for thirty years. And there is traffic at times, but I, I, I don't understand the sidewalks on both sides. And also, we have four spaces of off-street parking, and I measured it the other day, and it's gonna go right, right where our parking spot is. So I mean, where do we park? Because we are on the west side. So where do we park? I mean, there's gonna be people parking on the east side, and I mean, there could be a chance that we'd have to, you know, like walk like several blocks to park at our place. So that is, that is our concern right now, and I want to know. I, I was looking at Chloe's notes and her pictures, and it said, "One of the considerations was an accessible path across the driveway." So does that mean if you put the sidewalk there that we can drive onto our parking spot, and then the sidewalk will be like under our vehicle? So that was, I'd like to kind of answer, have an answer to that.
Thank you, Stephanie. Again, we'll try and address as many issues as we can when we follow up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jerry and Stephanie. We have Rose, John, Ron, and if Matt comes back, Matt. There's Rose. Rose, I think you just need to unmute.
Sorry. Hello, can you hear me now?
Can. Go for it.
Um, I'm gonna make it brief, but I just wanted to say you, thank you so much for all the time everyone's taken to come out to Eighth Street and time to multiple families that live there. I, little background for me, I'm a third-generation local, lifetime living in Carbondale. I've driven slash ridden bikes on that road my entire life. Definitely has changed from when I was a twenty-something, stumbling my way home on that road to being a mama on that road, riding with two kids and a dog. And those sidewalks are great when it comes to twenty-something, trying to figure my, my way home versus a mama and my double chariot and my dog and my two, two kids. Definitely, there's trees that get in the way of the small sidewalks. I'm really excited that we're looking at options. Personally, I think option A is the closest to what I feel works for the area. I am a very big feeder. I'm gonna just be honest there. And I have been called out to speed on that road. And I think that widening it too much makes me a little nervous because I think other people will also see it as an opportunity to speed. So I would not recommend the be, the buffer. I think low, smaller lane sizes, the ten and a half or even ten and ten-foot weight lane sizes work best, in my opinion. No buffer, six-foot sidewalks. The buffer really makes me nervous depending on who's gonna be in charge of landscaping on that, on that. If it's just gonna be a brown buffer, it's gonna be, do we need more grass that we're watering? And then I'm on a couple other boards, and so I know that like weed mitigation is a big, big thing in our town. And do we need to pay someone to be going out and steaming weeds on a little one-foot border? Probably not. I don't think we need a border. Moving, yeah, moving forward, I think that, yeah, like thirty-four foot street. The, the snow issue to me, not a huge deal because it is a big deal in one to ten days a year. But right now, I, I think that the other three hundred and forty-something days a year, it, it's not, it's not really a concern. But bigger sidewalks for us to be safe. I like, I really, really piggyback on CAFKE that we want enough space for people to walk together and elder people to be safe on those roads. Maybe we're looking at some benches sooner than later because I know there's a certain distance, and I don't remember what it is, that we're trying to get benches so that people can sit and feel comfortable. But that, I think that's my two cents. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Rose. Appreciate your comments. John, Ron Kokish, Matt Goric, and then Joni Lubert. Okay, doesn't look like we have John, so Ron, take it away.
Okay, thanks, Dan. I initially favored a two-sided parking option, but I changed my mind. And I mostly changed my mind by watching the Bike-Pet Commission process that they went through. And I was really persuaded by their ultimate courage, I think, in recommending an option that looks to the future in the face of so much "not in my backyard" kind of opposition. I have some facts I was gonna address tonight, but instead I'm gonna use the time to address some of the comments I'm hearing. I heard somebody say, "I feel perfectly safe riding my bike on Eighth Street," and then say, "A bike can go faster than twenty miles an hour." Well, my bike can't anymore. Yeah, if you can, if you can ride at twenty or twenty-five miles an hour as I used to be able to do, it's pretty safe to ride on Eighth Street. I still feel pretty safe on Eighth Street, frankly, on my bike. But my, my days are numbered. I'm eighty years old. My days are numbered. I heard somebody say, "What am I supposed to do? Walk home two or three blocks?" My answer is yes. I heard somebody say, "Well, gee, this goes right through my parking." Well, as I understand it, this plan doesn't take any land at all. It's a city right-of-way, and I own it, along with every other citizen. Some people have made that their parking, but it's not their parking. It belongs to all of us. The, and I want to talk about, you know, the environmental issues again, that this plan is not for what's convenient today. And I hope that the Board of Trustees will be able to see that. And, and while I know you see it, I hope you will act on it. I think Ben summed it up very well, and I don't need to repeat what he said. And I think, Dan, you, you started out summing up a lot of the details that are involved in this, and I'm really not talking about the details. I'm talking about the forest. But the forest is that, you know, we need to move people away from dependency on cars. And a lot of problems involved with that, and we can't do that all at once. And whenever we do anything to move people away from cars, people like me who are used to cars, I've got two of them in my garage, they, it's gonna inconven, excuse me, it's going to inconvenience some people. That's how it is. And it's gonna take some political courage to move the town in, in the direction of its own rhetoric, to become pedestrian-bike friendly, to become, have less of an environmental impact, and so on. That's gonna take some political courage. And I really urge the trustees to show that courage in the face of the pushback that you're getting from people who are thinking only of their convenience now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, do we have Matt back? Matt Goric? Not seen him. After Matt, we have Joni, and Fred Mallow, Will Hodges, and then Holly Buell. So Matt or Joni? Looks like we have Fred. Welcome back, Fred.
Hello. I'll try this again. I'll pick up where I left off. First of all, for those who weren't here, I'm Fred Malo, and I live in Fourth and Garfield. And each Tuesday evening, I have a meeting at the meeting place next to the Goat Restaurant that takes me down Eighth Street, often after dark, on my bike. Competing for the right-of-way with moving vehicles in front and behind you and parked vehicles to the side of you isn't a lot of fun. That's why I was disappointed when I saw the schematics for the proposed revisions to Eighth Street. They have sidewalks, and they have parking spaces, but they have no bike path. The bikes are expected to fight it out with the cars in the middle of the street. Recent polls shows fifty percent of Americans would like to ride bikes but are concerned for their safety. When I'm cruising down the Rio Grande Trail, I'm not the least bit worried about my or anybody else's safety. I know all I have to do is dodge a few pedestrians, and everybody will be fine. I'd like to see the sidewalks expanded so they can handle both walkers and bikers like the Rio Grande. I also see no need for automobile parking on both sides of the street. If a car owner has to park his fossil-fuel burner an inconvenient distance from his home, that's good. We're gonna have to learn not to rely so much on automobiles. The positive effect of walking and biking is obvious. No greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Thanks for hanging in. Up next, we have Will, Holly, and then Frosty.
Good evening, you all. Appreciate you guys putting in the time and thought into this difficult topic. I'm a coordinator with Three Fifty Roaring Fork, local chapter of threefifty.org, a global movement of people working to transition away from fossil fuels toward a just, just and sustainable future. We all understand here the urgent situation the world is in in terms of climate change. Transportation accounts for about a third of greenhouse gas emissions. It's the hardest sector to decarbonize, given where we, where people live and work and the lifetimes of their vehicles. We can only electrify the auto fleet so fast. We have to also reduce vehicle miles traveled. We have to encourage more development density going forward. We have to look at regional planning in order to shorten commutes. And we have to make our towns more walkable and bikeable. Eighth Street's a major artery through our town, connecting One Thirty-Three to the Rio Grande, to Main Street. If Carbondale intends to encourage more walkability, bikeability, more multimodality, to become less car-dependent, it now has a chance to walk its talk. The BPTC and, and Alta have done a lot of work and have identified Option B as the best plan for making Eighth Street more pedestrian-friendly and for meeting the goals in the Comp Master Plan to make Carbondale a multimodal community. I'm concerned about the build-out of Highway One Thirty-Three with big-box type establishments serving cars. I ride my bike down One Thirty-Three and can only safely cross at the roundabout and at the light at Village Road. While there is a good bike path on both sides of One Thirty-Three, we can all safely assume car traffic is going to increase turning into and out of city market, builders' first source, new housing developments, and growth in general. I, I agree with CAFKE that for Carbondale to live up to its status as a gold-level bike-friendly and AARP age-friendly community, not to mention its Environmental Bill of Rights and Master Plan, we ought to put it into practice and see what it looks like on one neighborhood artery in town. I understand that Option B alone won't suddenly change our cul, our car culture. I just see it as a start. I don't live in that neighborhood, and maybe I don't appreciate the impacts of losing parking. So I encourage all, you know, you, the board to consider carefully, like the, the parking and just how much parking would be lost. But I just want to speak up for the larger, longer-term community interest. I want to urge opponents to consider not only what they might be losing, but what they might gain with a street that more people can take advantage of by foot, scooter, stroller, wheelchair, Segway, bicycle, tricycle, e-bike, et cetera. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Will. Next up, we have Holly, Frosty, and Heather.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. And thank you, guys, for coming out and listening to all of what we had to say in the last couple of weeks. We submitted twelve more signatures today, so I think we're at around a hundred and sixtieth signatures. From listening to all the comments tonight, it sounds like we all want something similar. We want a safe corridor for everybody to use. We just have a little bit different perspective going into it. I really think losing the parking would leave a lot of working-class people without ways to commute up to Aspen. A lot of those people are contractors and other things like that where they need to have those work trucks. So they do have multiple vehicles, and forcing them to get rid of their vehicles or parking far away, I just, I don't think is a really good option. In the Eighth Street petition that, you know, we have many, many signatures on, we're not saying, "Don't do anything." What we would really like is something that's safer for everyone. And in hearing Kevin talk and other, and, and what Kevin actually wrote, he actually said, in some of the iterations that has happened, it kind of took out some of that traffic calming elements that were into the street design. I, I think everyone that signed the petition wants parking on both sides. They want, you know, the six-foot sidewalks, but they also want traffic calming added back into it. Traffic calming, for me, would be a narrower street of thirty-four feet. Um, traffic calming, for me, would be a narrower street of thirty-four feet. Um, if you also look at what Kevin put together, Hendrick Drive is thirty-four feet, point five feet wide with parking on both sides, and there's never been any issues with cars, emergency vehicles, snow removal, or anything getting down that street. Um, Eighth Street, south of Main Street, is only twenty-four feet wide. We're not asking for the minimum. We're not asking for twenty-four feet wide. We're asking for thirty-four feet wide. We know that we need to accommodate a bit of traffic on that street, so we're not asking for the minimal, but we are asking for something that calms a little bit. Um, again, um, on Colorado Avenue, in what Kevin put together, it says that the street is between thirty-eight and forty-two feet wide. Um, which is similar to Eighth Street, except for if you actually walk down that street, you'll notice that a lot of the traffic has the angled parking. It's not parallel parking, it's angled parking, and it's at thirty-eight feet wide. So I think a thirty-four-foot width narrows it a little bit, but not a lot, and um, would make a really big difference and make it safer for bikes sharing the roads, and make it safer, really, for everybody. And I, I think we're, we're trying to all go in the same direction, so, and I really appreciate all your efforts, and I appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you for providing all the backup information through this whole project, too. I appreciate it. Uh, next up, Frosty, Heather, and then Casey and Eric.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Frosty Marriott eighteen Lakeside Drive, uh, currently on the Town Environmental Board and the Chamber Executive Board. Um, first, thanks to everyone for your service and time. Uh, I really mean that. Um, I, I quickly found out, as I checked into this, there was a tremendous amount of outreach done on this project, and, and I really appreciate it. I know that the neighbors do as well. Uh, I drive home every day on Eighth from work. I go down one thirty-three. I come home on Eighth. Uh, hope never, nobody's ever trying to assassinate me, because I, I don't, don't vary from that, that routine. Uh, Plan B with its nine-foot extravagant sidewalks is a non-starter for me. Um, several folks have reached out to me. Um, so the amount of feedback I hear may warrant going back to the drawing board for an additional option. Just throw that out there. Um, most, you know, I'm a tree hugger. Uh, I'm not going to be in favor of anything that takes down a heritage spruce tree for nearly any reason. Uh, the trees are needed, and so is the parking. Uh, I'm, I'm really concerned that the town needs to set an example on how much we value our heritage trees, our small-town character, and neighborhood, uh, input, especially with all the new development going on, and the redevelopment of the forestry property on Main Street, where we could quite, we could lose, easily lose our town Christmas tree when that redevelops. And I'll just end it with that, and I thank y'all for listening. I thank everybody for coming out and, and, um, okaying and.
Thank you, Frosty. Heather McDonald, Casey and Eric Miller, and then Hilda Ramirez.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you for all the trustees and Dan to show up on Eighth Street the past couple of weeks to talk to us. And when I looked into the packet today, and I noticed that Hendrick's Drive was only thirty-four point five feet, has anybody really complained about the seniors that walk along that sidewalk and everything? Because I go by to that Wells Fargo all the time, so. And I rarely see anybody actually walking by anymore. And, um, one of the things, uh, I didn't like about, uh, losing the parking on the west side is that, uh, it would look sort of like Sopris Drive in Garfield near Carbon Care Center, where it's just everybody's parked on the side, and you have that sidewalk going right behind all the cars. But it's, just creates a heat area because there's no trees. And another thing is, like, the cost keeps going up. Now that you have gone up to like another fifty thousand to two hundred thousand from the last time we had a presentation, like, how much is it going to cost to relocate all of the fire hydrants, uh, fences, uh, the owner's property lines, all their sprinkler systems? Uh, uh, every single utility that was, we pointed out on the west side. It just seems like it's not going to be that cost-effective in the future, and like, how much are you going to actually, um, maintain in the future? Are we going to have like a plan for that? Um, those are pretty much my concerns, and, um, another person, thing that I do is, like, do cycle. And before the pandemic, I was actually taking the public transportation into Aspen every single day. But now that I've been home, I kind of use my car to, like, go do a couple errands in the morning and come back and go work from home. So I do notice that, uh, there has been a lot more people and a lot more speeding than I would have known if I was just still working every single day in Aspen, so, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you for your comments. Casey and Eric Miller, Hilda Ramirez, and then Dave Tietler. Hi, Casey.
Hi, it's Eric.
Oh, hi, Eric.
I, well, uh, my wife, Casey, and I live on Eighth Street, and, uh, you know, we, uh, I would have to agree that, that nine feet for a sidewalk seems abnormally large. Um, you know, with all this talk of trying to be a, uh, have less automobiles and less parking, and you know, you got to realize that we're a bedroom community for Aspen, and, and, you know, until recently, without the new city market, you could barely get a hardware store in here to, to go get anything you'd need for your house. So you're pretty much forcing a lot of people to, to have to have a car here, uh, because they can't work here, or they can't, you know, shop here. Um, so they have to have a car. Um, really, the biggest thing is, is that, you know, obviously, it's a safe thoroughfare on Eighth Street. Um, but I, I think that, that a lot of these options are, are a little overkill, and I really feel that that removing parking is really going to hurt, um, you know, a lot of people on this street. And, uh, you know, the, the hardest thing is, is you hear some of these people say, oh, well, what if you have to walk three, four blocks to get to your house? Well, again, somebody mentioned it before. This is one of those not-in-my-backyard kind of things. It's like, it's all well and good to say from the outside looking in, but when you have a whole side of the street here that is pretty much, you know, multifamily dwellings, and then you're going to basically eliminate parking on that when there's not even enough parking for those dwellings already, that really just doesn't, doesn't bode well. So, um, I do thank you guys for all your time and the effort you've put into this, um, and I just hope that we can come to an agreement that, you know, works for everybody. Um, and that was all I had.
Thank you, Eric. Did Casey also want to speak? Nope, guess not. Um, I'm guessing Casey had her hands full. Um, okay, Hilda, Dave, and then Lisa. Okay. Welcome, Dave.
Hi, Dan. Hi, everybody. I, I don't know how I got on the list, but I, I'm happy to speak. Is that just because I'm listening, Dan?
Uh, you probably just wanted an invite, and we assumed you wanted to speak, so.
Right, I asked how to, how to, uh, chime in, so I guess I'll chime in. Echo everyone, I appreciate all the work you've all have done, and, uh, you know, I know you have opinions coming at you from all sides, so I appreciate your calm demeanors. Uh, I guess my, after having listened to everybody, I, I tend to agree with, uh, the people who live along Eighth Street. I live just off of Eighth Street on Mesa Verde, but I walk, bike, or drive to work along Eighth Street pretty much every day. And that I think those people who live along the street say, keep the parking, and those who don't live on the street say, get rid of the parking. So I, I wonder if those people who don't live on the street had their parking taken away, if they would have the same feelings. So I, I would like to weigh more opinion toward those who live along the corridor, and I feel their opinions are important, especially as it relates to parking. And then the only other thing I would add is, I often bike, walk, and drive on that street, and I don't feel any less safe on that street than any other street in town. Um, so I don't quite see why Eighth Street's getting singled out um, as being unsafe, because I don't really think it's much less safe than any other streets, except where the ditch comes by, where the bike path is, and the Rio Grande Trail, where it juts out into the street. And I, I think that that's just a little, um, narrowing there that, you know, and you got to watch out for the vultures above, but that's a side point. But, uh, I do feel like that's kind of a little spot that needs to be addressed regardless of the options. But, um, if I had to choose, I would choose Option C, none of the above, and if not that, six-foot sidewalks. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dave. Lisa, Stephanie Gillespie, and then Mary Groom. And just, um, for the board, we have, after those three, there's, I believe, four more. Looks like we have Mary. And Mary, you just need to unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you, but no, thank you. I'm just here to listen and learn.
Okay, thank you. Uh, William, Michael Hassig, Beverly Patera, and then Lori Lo. Bill.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor and, uh, towns, uh, I'm, I'm already forgetting what I was going to say here. Trustees, I, I got you mixed up there with a minute for the Glenwood people, so. I, I really envy you, uh, because I discovered in all my, uh, emergency management I went through as part of my co-career, that people really only know, want to know three things in an emergency. They want to know what happened, how does it affect me, and what the hell are you doing about it? And I guess my question to you is, to what purpose are so many people going to be negatively affected? What's the emergency? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That's kind of a cliffhanger. I wanted you to give us the answer. But, uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, all right, Michael, there he is.
Hello, Dan.
This is my.
Um, I'm sitting here with my wife, Olivia Emery. We live on the corner of Lincoln and Seventh, so we're a block off of Eighth. And, uh, just a quick, couple of quick points. It seems to me tonight, the substantive decision before the board comes down to, do you eliminate the parking or not? Everything else is detail, and that's the principal question. Uh, from our perspective, uh, I would concur with the other speakers and the neighbors who live on that street in, uh, opposing the removal of parking on the west side. I think they understand what's going on in the street, and, uh, so I would, I would defer to those neighbors. Um, a question that, that, uh, your consultant may be able to answer, and that is, um, as a design professional, it's always been my understanding that parking along a street in its own way acts as a traffic calming and traffic slowing device. And so would the removal of parking along one side and the creation of an open vista along that side in fact not have the counterintuitive effect of encouraging people, people to drive at a greater speed? Uh, so that's just a concern I would raise about that solution. And the third point is that we are actively involved in, uh, bidding construction projects all the time now. And I am completely skeptical of the numbers you have, and I would be very surprised if you don't find out when you do this that the numbers you have in hand are going to be fifty percent higher. So listen to the neighbors. Just keep the parking on the west side. Watch out for what this is going to cost. Olivia, do you want to add anything?
No.
All right, thanks, Dan. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, um, I believe we just have two more, Beverly and then Lori.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not going to take any more time expressing comments that have already been shared. Here I am a resident, um, of Cleveland Place and a member of the HOA Board. Uh, you all received a letter from us last week, uh, expressing our opinions and opposition to the plan that was proposed by the BPTC. Um, like I said, I'm not going to waste any further time. I'm, I'm anxious to hear your all's decision after the public comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Beverly. And do we have Lori still on? Welcome, Lori.
I, I, I did not raise my hand initially, and I have nothing to say. I'm a member of the uh, Bike Pedestrian Trail Commission, and I went through this whole process, and, uh, we just felt that, um, the option that we recommended would be in the best interests, long-range interests of the entire town.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks for your efforts on the bike ped and trails. All right, those are all the names I have on there. I see, Brian, I appreciate you raising your hand, but I'm afraid, um, just due to where we are in the night, that we're going to keep it to, um, one comment per person. So I'm not seeing anyone else. Um, so with that, we will bring it back to the board. I, I'm not going to necessarily address all these right now, but the things I heard that it would be great if trustees could address as we talk, thing, talk is, um, you know, is doing nothing still an option? Um, Kevin maybe could address the windrow issue of, uh, snow being in the middle of the street. Um, asking us to take the broader perspective, the longer view, specific as a result, specifically as it relates to um, young kids and, and older folks and those with disabilities. Um, do we really need sidewalks on both sides? Obviously, the question is, do we really need parking on both sides? Um, the right-of-way ownership. And then Michael's question of, does parking increase pedestrian safety? And I think somewhere I read that in some of our documents, so. Um, I, I don't know if we need to debate that. I think that is true. So with that, any thoughts from the trustees? I do, uh, I, I agree with Michael that particularly the fact that it's nine oh five. Um, we're certainly not going to, um, resolve everything tonight, but I'm hoping the board can hang in there a little bit longer to maybe provide part, um, excuse me, guidance on the, the parking issue. I think, um, that is a threshold question, so if we could, um, weigh in on that, I think it would be great. Uh, and then maybe we save the details for a later meeting. So, Marty?
I'll kick it off, and I'll stick to the same rules you gave to everyone else, three minutes or less.
Hey, wait, hold on, let me set my timer. All right, go for it.
So first of all, instead of an Eighth Street problem, I'm hearing that this is really a town-wide problem. So we need a guide to street design for the whole town. We have developments that are in the process of being built out. We're going to have future developments. We have other streets that have issues. So let's not just think of this as an Eighth Street problem. Let's look at a guide to street design for the whole town. Secondly, thank you, everyone, for coming out. I wish everyone would have come out when we speak about getting a circulator that goes further along town to help people like it senior housing, et cetera. Um, only other thing I want to say is I am, don't want to see trees destroyed. I would like to see the nine-feet sidewalks to me are excessive. I mean, that's where I'm at. I don't think we're going to get an answer tonight. This is a very expensive project. I think we have budgetary constraints, and we need to think about what is best for the whole town, but also for the people who live on that street. Uh, you know, what they get, two and a half, three percent of the population to sign a petition? I think that's a significant number. Um, if the question about Hendrick Drive, which I believe was a Thirty-Four Street. If the question about Hendrick Drive, which I believe was a thirty-four street, thirty-four feet. Uh, street width and not having issues. And yes, that is closer to senior housing to Crystal Meadows. They seem to be able to use it with tricycles, et cetera. So, um, there are a lot of things to think about. I don't think we're gonna get a definitive answer tonight. And that's all I have.
So Marty, I'm sorry if I missed that, but, um, are you saying that we should keep parking on both sides?
Yeah, Plan B to me is a non-starter. Um, partially because of the parking issue, partially because of the expense. We're speaking about eight hundred thousand at a minimum. And I'm sure it'd come in at well over a million by the time we were done. That's a lot of money.
Thanks, Marty. Who's next? Erica, and then Ben.
I beat Ben. I'll just weigh on, weigh in on the parking right now, um, as per your question, and. If we had some cool alternative to propose for where people could park their cars. Um, but I think just saying, go find parking on some, you know, on a different street, a couple of blocks away. I, I don't feel like that's really fair to the local residents. And so I would be in favor of keeping parking on both sides of the street. I do think, really quick on Hendrick's Drive, there are not driveways and houses along Hendrick's Drive, like I live right here. And so it's the same width of the street, but people don't park on the street, and it's got a very big sidewalk with the big buffer that runs along the ditch that people use, so. I don't think we should compare. Eighth Street is a very different street than Hendrick's Drive. Um, but I do, along those lines, I think going for narrower, it sounds like the neighbors are really. Um, are experiencing, you know, high speeds, and I can't speak to that. Um, and so I would be in support of going for that narrower street so that we're not. Going into existing landscaping as much as. Uh, we might need to. I'll weigh on, in on the other questions as they come up if needed.
Thanks, Erica. Ben?
Yeah, I support basically option A, and we can talk about some details. So that's keeping parking on both sides. Um, six foot sidewalks on both sides. Um, I respect the fact that the Bike Ped Trails Commission took a really. Kind of visionary stance on this, and I really loved hearing some of the comments around that and from Nikki Delson and others. Um, around thinking toward the, the distant future and not just the present. Um, but we also have to manage the present with a project like this. And one other thing I'll say is that. One reason why I think it was worth engaging Alta Planning and everybody in this big process was because I think we've always had this question of. Could we actually improve multimodal, the multimodal corridor on Eighth without eliminating parking? And this whole process has shown us that, yeah, we can, and it's by putting sidewalks on both sides and some curb extensions and. Um, some traffic calming that way. And so. If we couldn't improve it without eliminating parking along one side, then I think we'd be in a tougher spot, and I think that we might seriously consider that. But the fact that we can, we can kinda have it all here. Um, I think that we should, we should maintain that. I think about a ten foot driving line. Um, I talked to Kevin about that, and we, we can hear from him later, but. Um, basically really close to exactly what option A is, and then just placing those curb extensions at, at. You know, strategic spots where people shouldn't park anyway, where there's a heritage tree, um, where there's a fire hydrant, stuff like that. Um, and if you look, I mean, I've got Google Earth where you drop in and you do the street view, opening my other window right now. Um, you can actually see kind of all the options are already there in some form or another. There's, there's attached sidewalks right next to the street. There's detached. I mean, people talked about this little landscape strip like it was a foreign concept. It exists in multiple blocks of Eighth Street right now. Um, some of them have trees in them, some of them don't. Um, and there's not actually a lot of heritage trees along the stretch that would be impacted by any of these, and I think that we could work around those for the most part.
Thanks, Ben. Uh, Lonnie, Heather.
You can go first, Lonnie.
Oh, she didn't have her hand up. I was just picking on people, so.
Okay. Uh, okay, um, so first, thank you to everyone. I mean, the effort. From Bike Ped Trail, the, the time spent, the number of volunteer hours, the number of. Paid hours from our own staff and Alta, uh, everybody that came. Uh, throughout the public process, just a, a big thank you. I think we now know why this can got kicked down the road for so long. Um, uh, because this is a tough nut to crack, so. Um, I wanna answer first, though, why do we need this? So I think that we heard a lot about the safe corridor for all modes, and it's. Why we decided to, to pick this up. So I think for, for folks that are, you know, very able-bodied and can navigate all sorts of things, stepping off a curb. Right? It seems easy, and it's not for everyone. So, so for me, I think there's, there is this, you know, we, we do need this. And a big part of that is just some not overthinking the problem, however, right? And this just whole idea of, you know, contiguous and safe walkways. So for me, uh, then you translate that to all of the information, all the studies, et cetera. Um, B really is a non-starter. It, you know, when you think about how to translate this into a street scape guide, I, I can't imagine replicating around town. You know, nine and a half foot, you know, even nine foot plus sidewalks. Um, so it just. Parking aside, even, you know, we, we talk about climate, you know, and then wanna kind of stretch this paving to its absolute limits, so. I, I support option A as our, our beginning point. You know, I actually support reducing the lanes just a little bit more, um, to somewhere in that neighborhood of ten feet. Um, you know, use that little bit of breathing room if we can in the sidewalks. I support the attached six foot sidewalks. Really accept where it makes sense, right, to detach, like Ben was saying. We're probably gonna have some movement in the sidewalk ultimately. Um, I, I really do support thinking about North Eighth Street because it's where we lack the most continuity on both sides of the street. And then obviously, this, this huge intersection, this massive multimodal intersection of. Of, uh, the Rio Grande and Eighth Street, right? Um, it has some of the worst safety issues. Uh, it's the one place where you just genuinely cannot continue continuously. Um, and like what an amazing statement that we could make in that spot. Um. And then really for me, this translates into some of the long-term ideas. So one, I support what Marty is saying. I, I would like to proceed with Eighth Street and then use that as our Kickstarter to put together our street scape guide. Um, so that we have a lot of clarity to new developments and just for ourselves as we're doing some of these improvements. Um, second is, I would love to then take up separate from Eighth Street, a zero tolerance speeding policy. Uh, I, I guess I really differ that fifty-five percent of us, and this isn't outside people. I mean, Eighth Street is. Really primarily my neighbors and your neighbors and people that are circulating through town, and we are speeding past each other. And so I, I'd really like to take up totally separate, put a stake in the ground. I moved here. If you went, I, I got a ticket on Cemetery Lane going into Aspen at twenty-five miles an hour, cuz it's twenty. And you knew the reputation, and you did not speed down Main Street because, I'll be damned, you will get pulled over. So I'd like to kind of put that on our list as a group to take up as a separate issue. Um, lastly. You know, my vision in that long term, absolutely. Ultimately, Eighth Street and our streets, I want one corridor that's our circulator bus only. And the bikes are in the rest of it, and the rest of the concrete, we get to yank up and reclaim as an open space. And that's as soon as we get ourselves fully out of and off cars. But I think Ben said it best that you have to balance, but, but we don't need to take up more, right? We're gonna rip up the concrete and do some of that. And, and we're, that's gonna happen, whether it's cuz we're in flying cars that are, you know, on hydrogen power or something else, but. Um, I think that Ben said it best, just in terms of, we still have to kind of. Manage the here while supporting and having a vision for what's five years, ten years, and forty years. So. That's my vision, flying cars. Put that in the paper.
Okay. Lonnie and Luis? Luis?
Um, sure, or Lonnie, you can go first.
A chicken, no. Um. Yeah, I, you know, I'm left with. What happened to the original premise of this initiative being centered around addressing traffic congestion on Eighth Street? I mean, it feels like we've strayed from what's been driving the conversation in the first place, and I really commend my, um, fellow panelists here for. Taking this up and driving it this far. Um. But, you know, I understand that this has been all, always been around traffic calming, but now we've been met with a complete redesign. It seems a little. Little opportunistic depending upon who we're listening to, so. Um, but all things aside, uh, based on what I've heard this evening. Um, I agree that, uh, Plan B is a non-starter, and I would entertain gladly some iteration of Plan A. Um, once, you know, I understand that it's gonna meet what the initial objective was. So that's really where I sit on this right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Lonnie. Luis?
Um, yes, um, I mean, I think I, I echo Marty's comments when he brought up in terms of things that. With option B definitely are, are non-starter, and I'm leaning towards option A. Though I think at, at the outset of this, I was kind of in the do-nothing camp, um, just because of the costs associated with this. I mean, I understand it's. A quarter that needs to be addressed, and I hope that. The result is, uh, that comes out as something that we can apply to other. Areas, you know, roads that we find a similar, um, concern with, but I, I have to defer to those who live and are gonna be directly impacted by. Um, whatever decisions we make on, on, you know, um, so I look at. If similar thing were happening here on Second Street where I live, I would have strong, uh, opinions about this, and I would be concerned if, if they weren't. Not just heard, but really kind of thought about, um, as day-to-day life and how, how it impacts somebody who's there. Um, so I am leaning option A. But yeah, without touching any of the trees, not removing parking, and I, I do have concerns about the cost involved with this.
Thank you, Luis. Ah, all right, I'll share some thoughts as well. Yeah. I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but I really do appreciate everybody engaging. We've, uh, it's amazing how much more engagement we have after COVID. Um, but nonetheless, it's still remarkable that folks are willing to, uh, put in as much time, and I really appreciate. Uh, the Hollies and the Nickies and others who put in a lot of research and provided us information, um, not to mention Chloe and staff. And it's just great to have this much comment. For me, this, my priority for this corridor has always been safety for who I would call the mobility-challenged, and, uh, as several of our speakers. Mentioned, that's a lot of different types of people. Um, I think until you really understand the traffic patterns around or the. Um, the corridors around Carbondale, it's hard to understand just how important this corridor really is. You know, if you live in, on Wheel Circle or, um, down Cowen, you know, this corridor is your only way to get into town almost as. As Nicolette said, unless you're on Highway one thirty-three, which is not desirable. So while there's many people who feel comfortable on the street, many don't, yet. This is really their only option. And I also agree that, um. Our demographics are gonna change and. You know, just like, none of us knew we wanted an iPhone until it was presented, and I think down the road, we're gonna realize, geez, we really wanted to increase this, um, multimodal. And, uh, safety for everyone, and as our demographics change, I think we're gonna need to keep, um. As I think either Ron or Nikki said, keep the forest in mind. So that has been my, um, priority from, from day one. But I wanna realize that for the entire town, not just this corridor, and I think that means multiple fixes. And as I've thought about climate change over the years, we can't do everything at once. Um, just because the town isn't putting solar on every single house doesn't mean we don't support climate change. It means we have to prioritize the fixes that are most cost-effective, and at the end of the day, I believe, any fix we're talking about or any. Progress, any improvement we make, it comes down to what's the most cost-effective improvement. And so, um, to me, that means, I, I personally, I, I think North Eighth, we need to fix that. I don't think it's safe. I don't think it functions well. Um, South Eighth, um, below the, or south of the Rio Grande Trail, I think it's functioning okay, and I think there are other safety improvements for the mobility-challenged in town. That are a higher priority than anything south of, of A Street. Uh, I also think that, um, really focusing on the Rio Grande Trail intersection with A Street, we haven't talked much about that, but I think that there's a great opportunity to. Uh, improve, to reduce traffic by really necking that down, improving that crossing right there. Um, and to me, that's, that's just a real opportunity. And I think, Ben, you said it that what I realized through this process, even though, to be honest, I really wanted, I love the idea of getting rid of parking on one side. Um, because of the reasons mentioned, why, why in a lot of ways that sounds bold. But I don't think we need to, and I think that is a significant impact to the neighborhood because the neighborhood wasn't designed for it. As Erica said, we don't have a good solution, um, for eliminating that parking. If we did, it might be a different story. But I am confident that we can create a safe corridor by maintaining parking on both sides of, of, uh, North Eighth. So, um, I don't think, and I think by doing that, in my personal opinion. Um, we are enabling ourselves to make other improvements around town that are more cost-effective than, than what I see, um, Plan B being, so. Those are my thoughts. Any other follow-ups? Follow-up comments from, yeah, Ben?
Um, I mean, I'd say first of all, it's good to hear that it sounds like we're all in agreement, um, on the, the fundamentals of this plan. Um, I also just wanted to point out, you know, it's rare that we as a board. Um, disagree with a recommendation from one of our commissions, and I want the people on that commission to really understand that. Um, that, you know, we just have to take other things into consideration here, and we respect the work that they've done and, and all that. I also wanna point out, though, to this board and the public. The, the first motion made at the Bike Ped Trail meeting was to recommend option A to us, and it failed by one vote. And then the next motion made was to recommend option B, and it passed. So it's not that they were. Totally against option A. They saw these as, you know, one was a little bit like more grand plan of a, of a, um, multimodal corridor, and I respect the fact that they recommended that and made us seriously consider it. The only other thing I would say is I agree with Dan on let's focus on north of the Rio Grande Trail. I think Heather's idea of really focusing on that intersection is great. And then the one other thing is this issue of how do you. Narrow the perception of the driving lanes, and I, as I looked around town, the places that seem narrower than they are are the places where we've delineated where the parking is, and it's a combination of those curb extensions. But if you look down Third Street and on Main Street, two different applications. I'm not suggesting we do either one exactly, but it's striping in some places, and it's curb extensions in others. So I'd love our next iteration of this to involve a really clear, like, you know exactly where the side of the driving lane is, and that was one of the Bike Ped Trails' concerns was that during the day. This is not very, uh, parked in, and then it seems like a four-lane highway, and so that's one reason why they said, let's eliminate some of that parking, but I think we could get to that same. End result by striping it and, and using curb extensions.
Kevin, uh, do you feel you have, um. Good guidance for the next step? And, and can you tell us what the next steps might look like?
Well, I, I think we have guidance on. Maintaining the parking on both sides, and I'm not suggesting we go into this tonight, but I do think it would be good to have a follow-up meeting. To talk about some of the other bullet points I had in there. I, I think those bullet points are gonna help us get to an efficient and effective final design, and without that, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable. Just winging it on my own without having more discussion with you guys.
So do you think, um, I'm assuming that. Since we very rarely go past nine thirty, um, I'm assuming that we're not gonna get into all these tonight. Um, is anyone who feel, yeah, Marty's shaking his head. Um, so I agree, Kevin, that we need additional, um, discussion.
Dan, I would just say I don't think it's much. I'm okay with doing it later.
Dan, I would just say I don't think it's much. I'm okay with doing it later, but I don't think we need to delay it much. Like, I don't know if we can get into our last meeting of this month or something like that. I think it's like a twenty minute discussion of some details rather than a big contentious, like big decision to make.
We have time on the work session next week to just put a half an hour in at the end. On the work session next week, we have an hour on the green building code, an hour update with Parks and Rec. And we could put a half an hour just to go through the Kevin's list to just, there is time.
Good, I was thinking of that. And so Kevin, if what you're saying is if we came prepared next week with. Responses to those six items. You feel like that would be, that's the guidance you're you're looking for?
I do.
Okay, how's that sound to everybody?
I'm not sure I understand which, what, so what, which bullet points?
In his in his memo on page three eleven of our packet.
Yep, bunch of bullet points. So which six on? So three eleven, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
And and I agree, I don't think it's a long discussion, but I think it's always a little bit longer than we think it's going to be. And it's late, so. Anybody have strong objections of taking that path?
It's been a year. We can wait one more week.
All right, Chloe, any thoughts or final comments?
No, I really appreciate the the opportunity for being involved in this project and. I agree with. Almost everything that was said tonight, so I just appreciate your time letting me join this meeting.
Great. Okay, anything else, Jay or Kevin, before we. Adhere to this item?
Not for me.
Okay. Well, I think we are. Item nine is just minutes and correspondence. Any questions of Jay on minutes? Jay, do you mind sharing what we're going to talk about next week?
Yeah, we're going to start off with an hour on the green building code on the commercial side. Jeff Dickinson will be joining us from the east coast. And then we're going to have the update with the Parks and Rec Commission for an hour. Kind of the annual check in, and then we'll jump into a half an hour on the six bullet points on page three eleven.
Okay. Heather?
And I may be late next week, so I'll try and join as soon as I can.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for listening and participating and. Maybe we could have wrapped it all up tonight, but didn't work out that way, so.